Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are reconvening from our closed session and there is nothing that needs to be disclosed. Want to adjourn the closed session at 6:08 and want to call to order the regular city council meeting on Wednesday, January the 24th at 6:08 PM. And Mr. Clerk, if you can read the Metro replay.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, January 26 at 1:00 PM and Monday, January 29 at noon. It is being closed captioned, will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a speaker card, they're the blue cards which can be found at the back of the room, and provide it to the assistant city clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
If you can call the roll, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Nguyen is absent. Councilmember Detrick.
Here.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Vice Mayor Suon.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. And next item.
Next will take us on to item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, I'd like to invite Ethan of Troop 118 to come on up and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To.
All right, at the beginning of every regular city council meeting, the city council would like to ask members of the public to join us in a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. And I have an agenda in front of me.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the following exception, to continue items 9.2, 9.3, due to the request of the applicant.
Okay. What a motion second, all in favor?
To be clear before you vote, that would be continuing to a date certain of February 14, 2018, correct?
Yes, thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed,赞成? All right, next item.
We have no closed session items under Section 3, which will take us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements, starting with item 4.1, which is the Youth Commission's semi-annual update.
All right, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I'm Carrie Byerline, Executive Administrative Assistant to the City Manager and serve as advisor to the Elk Grove Youth Commission. I am happy to introduce our Youth Commission for the 2017-18 school year. They will be sharing their presentation with accomplishments and upcoming events they have planned. This group of kids is very passionate about helping their peers, and I think the events they've chosen accurately reflect the needs of the youth in Elk Grove. I'd like to highlight that we've held our first joint event, the Teen Forum, with the CSD's Teen Action Committee, and have a second combined event this Saturday. We have established an excellent working relationship with the staff at CSD, and working together to serve the youth has really been successful. Thank you to our historian, Sienna, for doing a great job putting together the PowerPoint. I'll now turn it over to the Commission for introductions and their presentation. And I'd like to introduce Natalia Romero, who will start.
Good evening, my name is Natalia Romero. This is my first year on the Youth Commission, and I'm the vice chair.
Hello, my name is Sienna Bongse. I serve as the historian, and this is my first year on the Youth Commission.
Hi, my name is Marion Simana, and this is my third year on the Youth Commission.
Hello, I'm Tessie Gonzalez, and I'm in charge of the, I'm a communications officer of the Youth Commission, and this is my first year.
Good evening, I'm Madeline Bagwell, and I'm one of the commissioners.
Hi, I'm Bobby Barker, this is my third year on the Commission.
Hello, I'm Calvin Wong, I'm as the secretary, and this is my fourth year on the Commission.
So for this presentation, we're going to be talking about the summer retreat, our Party on the Palms event, the Teen Forum, our Future Shape Your Future event, the Stronger Together one, and our community social.
At our summer retreat, we all got acquainted with each other and got to meet some of the new members, and we did some team-building activities, icebreakers, and our city clerk stopped by to review some of the city policies and review the rules and rules on the Commission.
Our second annual event is the Party on the Palms, which is a social gathering for the teens of Elk Grove to come out and meet other teenagers that don't go to their school or find, or just a fun way to spend time with their friends. This year, we had greater attendance within the city, and we expect a better turnout next year.
All right, so this is our Shape Your Future event. It's open to all teens, and so we had three, we have three workshops. One of them is for financial management, like learning how to invest early and get financial skills that'll be useful on later in life. And then the next workshop is college preparation, you know, getting down your SATs, learning where to choose colleges, and other college-related skills. And the last one is the preparing for jobs, such as learning interview tips, learning how to dress appropriately, and other tips that'll be useful in the working world. And this year, we're going to have a career fair afterwards with vendors such as the Elk Grove Police Department or CSD Fire Department.
We are currently planning the Stronger Together event on March 3rd of this year, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We are going to have guest speakers addressing issues such as teen mental health, teen stress, depression, suicide, including myself. And it is mainly to give them some resources to do if you need some light shed.
Looking back at all the other events, we see that they cater mostly to teens, therefore we wanted to end off the fiscal year with a community event called the Family Carnival Day that is available for all ages. It will be happening Saturday, April 14th, at the Old Town Plaza. However, not all the details have been decided, and you will hear more about that later on, but there will be music, food, trucks, and more.
And for me, I'd like to announce that, as right now and present, we have a Commission vacancy. Applications may be turned, maybe turned to a city clerk by 5:00 PM on February 16th, and applications can be found at Elk Grove City website. And deadline is February 16, 2008.
In closing, I'd like to thank the city council for their continued support for their Youth Commission, and I'd like to thank them for their time tonight.
Thank you for your time. I have a question, quick question, Mayor, if that's all right? Just wondering, how are you able to reach your peers in other schools? What media, what forms of outreach are you guys using to get folks out to these events?
So, in the era of technology, you see the use of Instagram, as well as we use a lot of flyers that Carrie hands out to us for us to distribute to our own individual schools.
You getting good traction with Instagram and things?
I believe so.
So I have a question that goes along with that, I guess it's maybe more for Carrie, is, you know, we had Ms. Pinkerton, who's the Public Information Officer for the Elk Grove Unified School District here, and one of my comments was about being able to get our, the city's message out to the students and the parents within the school district. In the past, those doors have been, lack of better words, have just been flat-out closed. Has there been any recent talks with you in the school district to be able to see if they're willing to be more receptive to what our Youth Commission is doing, since it's their representation of all the schools in the district?
I think we've mostly worked with the kids themselves, trying to get the word out, and they have friends from different schools, and they're trying to use that avenue more. In the past, we've worked on, like, getting flyers and putting them out to each individual school, but there's actually a pretty high cost of all those flyers, and we've noticed that they kind of get left places, or in the garbage, or things like that. So, we're trying different avenues. I know that they used to have School Loop, and the broadcasting was a little bit different, and now they've changed, so we look forward to working with them for, to try a different avenue, but mostly we've relied on the kids. Like, our event this Saturday, we have 100 and, almost 125 kids signed up, and I was trying to cap it at 120, just to keep it at the workshop groups that we wanted, so I'm really, I feel like this year, we've done a really good job about getting people to participate.
That's really good. I don't know, Kristen, would that be something that you could be tasked with, to work with Ms. Pinkerton at the school district?
Sure. We are working with them to coordinate for the Amgen Tour of California now, that provides a natural avenue to have that kind of conversation.
Perfect, thank you.
And actually, I just had a thought, since Councilman Detrick mentioned it. I've seen a newsletter that's sent out on a regular basis, district-wide, and that's something that the PIO just initiated when she came onboard Ms. Pinkerton. That's something that you can easily piggyback off of, and, you know, I've seen a lot of the Sacramento City events that are being publicized, but I haven't seen a lot of our Elk Grove events, so maybe we can look into that and have a conversation, even with a two-by-two as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Mayor and Vice Mayor, we have a two-by-two meeting next week, that we can certainly bring this up.
So, great.
One more thing, I went to an event where you were partnering with the CSD teens. Is there any more activities that you guys plan on partnering with them on?
Our event this weekend is actually, we're both, yeah.
Oh, that is true.
So we kind of took the lead at the workshop portion, because we've done that before, and CSD is adding the career fair portion, so we're working together, and both the Teen Action Committee and the Youth Commission will be presenting, like, opening and being there and participating.
Okay, great. That's a great way to reach more kids, okay. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate you all and your hard work.
Good job, guys.
Thanks, Carrie.
Saw in the paper today that one of the topics of that Stronger Together meeting on the 3rd, March 3rd, is going to be the subject of racial relations and interactions on school campuses. I was wondering if any one of you might be willing to come forward and give us kind of your honest take on where things are, and maybe some ideas you have for opening up that conversation.
We wanted to plan an event because we know that depression and mental health is very lacking in this age, and especially with all of the media use, and seems to be a very big problem, so our plan is to have guest speakers, like, including myself, and we plan on having a school counselor, I believe, to offer some resources, such as programs, and offer the hotline number, as well as do some exercises that would hopefully give them a little more hope.
Okay, in addition to that, though, I'm asking specifically about sort of the racially-charged discussions that may take place. Are you going to have some sort of facilitator or somebody on hand who's a professional in how to guide those types of conversations?
As of now, the guest speakers are each doing designated, like, sections, some as teen stress, mental health, but there can potentially be one who will start the discussion of racism to address what's gone on lately, and I think it would be beneficial for potentially, because it's still undecided since the event is in March, but there is a chance we'll have a guest speaker who will focus on speaking about racism and starting the conversation, because it is an uncomfortable subject, but after what's gone on lately, it definitely needs to be addressed.
Well, thank you for saying that, and I would challenge you, if not at this meeting, that you guys really kind of make that a part of your curriculum for this year, of how you're going to act as student ambassadors in your own schools. Thank you.
Excellent. No more questions? No? Thanks, guys. All right, next item.
That'll take us on to Section 5, Public Comment.
All right, first speaker is Angela Spees, following Angela is Wanda Cleveland.
Hello there, Mayor, and Vice Mayor Suon, Councilman Detrick, and Hume, good to see you all this evening. I'm Angela Spees, and I'm with the Laguna Sunrise Rotary, and I'm actually representing our district for Rotary and our annual speech contest that we're going to be holding this year on February 8th, here at Council Chambers, and so I want to invite you all, and I see tons of teens out here, I'm looking for applicants to apply by February 2nd for our February 8th contests, and yes, there will be money awarded, so we have, I would love to have some of you come talk to me afterwards about this. I also would like to let you know that speech contest is also a great art, and I'm part of the Arts Agribusiness, and we really want to promote getting our teenagers out and getting comfortable talking in front of others, because we know that's an important skill. This year's theme is making a difference. So, again, it's going to be February 8th at 6:30 here at Council Chambers, and we're accepting applications through Friday, February 2nd. And I contact myself, Angela Spees, at angela.spees@gmail.com, or get a business card or an application from me that I have tonight. And thank you so much, I hope to see you all here.
Thanks, Angela.
Thank you. Next speaker is Wanda Cleveland, following Wanda is Lynn Wheat.
Good afternoon, or evening at this point. My name is Wanda Cleveland, I've been serving at downtown with advocacy groups about the homeless population. So I came here because Daryl Steinberg told me to go back home. They're not doing anything, they're not, I'm very frustrated with Sacramento and what they're doing for the whole population as it is. I'm hearing a lot of good things coming out of Elk Grove, so what I came here for is to be plugged into some of the volunteer positions in different areas of homelessness. So, and I spoke to Ms. Spees just a few minutes ago, and she had given me some really good information, but if you guys have any alternatives to, additional to what she's given me, I would appreciate it. I think the tiny homes are a very popular place to start. I've been reading up on a lot of things that you guys have been doing. We also feed the homeless downtown, and in front of City Hall. I've seen police brutalize homeless, I've seen them, I've been brutalized by the police in Elk Grove, not in Elk Grove, Sacramento, not in Elk Grove. I've been arrested for talking out of line in chambers. I've been told I have no decorum in front of people, in front of, I'm just frankly tired of promises and not getting anything done. So I'm come here in good faith to see what I can do about the homeless population that we have, because you don't see the people laying around the stores and stuff like that here, as you do in Sacramento. So, anyway, I'm coming back here to Elk Grove where I reside, I live, it's only going to be temporary, because the people are going to be selling the property, I am going to be homeless. So I guess I'm looking into making sure that that doesn't happen for me also. But, again, we do feed the homeless in Sacramento, in several different places, and we risk arrest. I hope that that doesn't happen here. I would like to start a place of feeding the homeless here in Elk Grove, because we have several people that do it for Sacramento, and we're coming out of Elk Grove, so we may as well come here and feed the people, but also, I don't want to start off on a bad, a bad foot with you guys, or with the police department here in Elk Grove. So, and that's what I've come here for. Basically, I need information, knowledge, and all that, and a place to go.
Wanda, I would suggest, start with the Methodist Church in Old Town. They provide a lot of services, and they're also very well-connected with some of the larger organizations such as Heart or the Elk Grove Food Bank.
Okay, okay, thank you. That wasn't mentioned, so I appreciate you guys taking the time out to listen to me. I get very frustrated, Sacramento's two years, I spent one night in jail, and for something that was constitutionally right, I have a right to speak. So I hope that I don't get off on the right, wrong foot with you guys. Thank you so much.
Wanda, I also heard you say you might be close to being homeless.
Yes, I am.
Maybe if you could, if you give your name and contact information, could we put her in touch with Sarah Wontager? We have a navigator program, so it'd be good to get you in touch with those folks.
Well, it's not, it's not going to be anything immediate, August may be the first, but I've been told for two years that we're going to sell, we're going to sell, we're going to sell. I live right here on Bond and Bader, in a rental, on the, so they're my friends, I'm hoping that they don't do that to me, but if it does, I have to prepare, nobody more take care of me, me. So, that's another thing I'm here for, too.
We'll just share with you what services are available here.
Yes, I would appreciate that. And I also understand that the Food Bank has a lot of valuable information.
And Ms. Cleveland, I was just going to suggest, my son just got through an internship with the Elk Grove Food Bank, and it, you know, the things that he's shared with me is tremendous, and the amount of work that that nonprofit does for Elk Grove has been stellar, and so that would be one additional thing that I would suggest, is stop there. There is volunteer opportunities, and there are many other resources that they can get in with as well.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
All right, next speaker is Lynn Wheat, following Lynn Wheat is David McManus.
Good evening, Lynn Wheat, Citizen Planner. I'm here tonight to talk about my history with Elk Grove and why planning has been so dear to my heart. So I brought some things that I've shared in the past that I'd like to share again, and they're books and references that, there's a lot of students here that I would suggest to them, if they are interested in planning or interested in their community, that they themselves may consider these books. The first book I have, I received from my son when he went to UC Davis, and it's The Guide to California Planning, and it really helped to educate me on the planning process and some of the terminology that is so important when we're addressing issues within our city. When I began being concerned about planning in Elk Grove, that was when we became a city in 2000, and I actually introduced some comments to our general plan. Unfortunately, I didn't understand the process at that time, so my comments in regards to how we were going to develop and the growth in East Elk Grove was ignored, because I simply had suggested that we look at property to build another regional park within our community as we look towards expanding. I continued my interest in this, and the second book that I came in contact with is called Lost Child in the Woods, and it talks about how some of our students within our education system are so confined to classrooms and cement and areas that aren't conducive to sustainability and addressing the quality of life issues. And I again suggested that we look at really completing our trails and connections and making our area safe. Unfortunately, I continue to be way ahead of my time as far as land use planning goes. Of course, I become discouraged during this time, and my uncle, who has since passed away, said, "Continue to be encouraged and speak out, even if you're mayor and council, and you've changed over the years, the faces have, but the decision policymaking hasn't, hang in there." And he shared with me a book on my 50th birthday, it's called An Unreasonable Woman, and this woman fought for her area within Louisiana against all odds. And so, so that gave me the encouragement to continue to stand up here and be dismissed, and be called all kinds of names. First name I was called because I believed that we needed those outdoor spaces for kids, was a tree hugger. The second name I was called was a biologist, and that came over the Ventura Park project when I said, "Hey, we have an opportunity here to have an educational environment and open space that would address all people in our community." And I only pushed that because we, as a government agency, had owned that, so it wasn't a private property issue rights, and that was going to be sold to a home developer, and they wrote the contract, which really, in my mind, wasn't too legal, and once again, a gift of taxpayer money. The final book that keeps me coming before you and not giving up, and even hearing that I don't have a life, which I do, and sometime I'll share with you my trips and my experiences and my work outside of this, is the Bible, and it's what I base my life on. So this is what really gives me the strength to endure what I hear from you after I make my comments, when you get the last word and I don't get to add a rebuttal. So once again, for all the students that are here, there are decisions being made that are going to create your life in years to come, and I hope that you will look to participating in this at some level. Thank you.
Next speaker is David McManus, following David is Susan Mattson.
Good evening, thanks for the opportunity to address you guys, and ladies. My name is Dave McManus. I came to Elk Grove with my family when there was only one exit off 99, we used to back up on the highway, so, been here a bit. And it's not my first time working with the city council, my issue's always been the proliferation of these signs, which are illegal in our city by code, and they just go up because they're cheap ways to advertise, and nothing else. In the corner, Metro PCS sign you see, that one was just taken off Laguna Boulevard. This is the kind of trash that these vendors leave for the city to represent the city. We need to take, especially along our boulevards, a more proactive upkeep of our codes on signage. It's the only way it's going to happen, and I'm not saying, I just mentioned the boulevards because I don't want Old Town involved, I don't want the auto mall involved, but the boulevards, the citizens of Elk Grove are already paying additional money every year to have those maintained, and they deserve more attention from whatever organization's responsible for this, to make sure that these signs are not allowed, they're taken down immediately. Prior city council ruled that this was graffiti business, it's just business graffiti, so that helped quite a bit, and we have used the volunteers for some taking them down, but it's falling way behind, and you, everyone here will see something on the way home that shouldn't be there. And it's just making us look like foreign rope to me. And especially on these boulevards, we need to step up our game and take care of the presentation of these roads. Finally, I know you guys have all sorts of strategic plans and great ideas, but I'd like to remind you, at least from my perspective, and I think from most of citizens of Elk Grove, you have two duties: keep us clean and keep us safe. Everything else won't matter if you don't do those two things. Strategic planning, you can throw it out the window. And I think if we take a real hard look at how the city looks right now, we're not keeping it clean. There's times to move forward, but there's also times to take a good look at where we're at, and evaluate our own progress as to how we're maintaining our boulevards, and I think if you get out there and take a hard look, you'll see my point. That's it, I do appreciate your time. I don't know if you guys have any questions or anything.
David, I agree with you wholeheartedly. What I'd recommend also, we'll take a look at that as the city side, but also if you see, or if any of your sphere of influence sees issues that need to be addressed, you know, there's apps.
Well, I'm, of course, willing to work with the code enforcement, whatever they need, but, you know, you basically have three classes of offenders. One is the retailers who put up signs and the who put up signs, and the sandwich boards, which are also illegal. And guess what? Those things are going to get LEDs on them pretty quick. And they'll be even more annoying than they already are. The second class is the people that lease the land. Most of our leased signs in our city are way too big, not to code. We should just inventory them, and at least put them on notice that six months from now, this has to be fixed.
You have some good points, David.
And lastly, is just these kind of guys that are just out for money, you know? That group. It is just graffiti, and you might as well just tear them down as fast as you can put them up. And they'll get the word, if we're taking them down fast enough, that they're just wasting their money in Elk Grove.
I think there's also, John, if you could elaborate, I think isn't there some personal property rights that we can't-
Yeah, we discussed that at the last city council, and because we codified it, they said it's graffiti, that gave us the right to go after.
So, there are some personal property rights involved. What code enforcement staff typically does, as I understand, and maybe they can elaborate, is they will take the signs, if they're illegally placed, and hold them. And if we can identify the property owner, they can have the signs back. Something like this doesn't seem like it has a lot of value, but if the owner wants it back and places it legally someplace, that's fine.
Isn't that only in the public right a way we can do that? We can go take stuff down?
If you, if my, again, this issue came up before, and my understanding was, by calling it graffiti, which is what it is-
I'd like to hear from our city attorney, because that's who we're going to fall back on.
That's what the, that then gave us the right. Because it could be something lewd. Now, are you going to, is the city attorney going to get involved with a lewd picture on a private property? No, you want the cops to get in there and take care of it.
So, I'm not going to personally remove any of those. I rely on those on our code enforcement staff. There are restrictions going on to private property. I mean, depending on the context we meet, I need a warrant to do that. But I'll work with the code enforcement staff, and we'll take a look at it. I'm not familiar with the distinction he's discussing about graffiti. Maybe I'm just overlooking something, but we'll talk to Shane about that, and see what we can do. It's certainly a legitimate concern.
Shane was involved with that decision last time. Good man. He helped out a lot. But again, it needs to be readdressed, it needs to be revisited, and especially on our boulevards. You know, that's what really says who Elk Grove is. And it looks like Florin out there to me. So.
Thank you.
So, Mr. McManus, you've had conversations with Shane? You know who that is?
Yes, I have. Shane.
Okay. All right. If, I can just ask for a loop, so that Mr. McManus can get an update, once, whatever you find out. John, thank you.
Yeah. I appreciate your time, and thanks for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, and I'll leave you that beautiful sign there. I don't think we went back out on Laguna Boulevard.
Our next speaker is Susan Mattson, and following Susan is Randy Becker.
Hello. My name is Susan, and I pick up litter in Elk Grove. And the problem is, there is not enough trash cans. There are places where I have to go across the street to get to a garbage can. And, you know, it just frustrates me. And it's not only for me, you know, I'm sure people would feel better about themselves if they're putting garbage litter into a receptacle, instead of dropping it. Like, for instance, on Laguna, from 99 to Franklin, on the south side, there is one trash can. On the north side, there is five trash cans. That's the planning. I don't know who put trash cans where, but they weren't thinking, or I don't know. I don't know. But we need more trash cans. That's all I want, is more trash cans, please.
Thank you for picking up the litter. We'll see what we can do, for sure. Thank you.
And, you know, I just wanted to acknowledge how I met you. I saw this young lady out in the cold, picking up garbage. And I had a stop, and we had a really nice conversation. But I think what would be helpful is, Bob, would this be under you? If you could have a conversation with this gentleman to my left, he will help you with that. And if you can identify specific areas in which there is a lack of trash cans. You know, I trust you. You have walked probably in the whole city. And, you know, thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Randy Becker. Following Randy is Vanessa.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I hope you're feeling better. We've missed you.
A little bit. Thank you.
Good, good. It's good to see your youth in the audience. Before I get started, I want to say a few things that they need to take in. Even though all of us handle things differently, we should try to handle it in a professional manner. We are not going to agree on everything. And sometimes, there's going to be heated conversations, but it should not be personal. Should be addressed in a professional manner, in some ways, more so than others. The only way you can get your point across is to listen. If you don't listen, you can't hear what the other person just said. And so, a lot of what's going on today is the fact that we don't listen, we don't pay attention to what someone else has to offer. So, I would say to the youth in the audience, that we were born with two ears and one mouth. There's a reason for that. I think it's time, given the circumstances that the city has found themselves in, school district, CSD, to support a parade march on Martin Luther King's birthday, on the holiday. I think it's time that the city get involved, getting the culture committee, the youth committee, the school district, and CSD. If you want to unify the city, get the citizens involved, and know who their neighbors are. Some of us used to be able to come down the boulevard, the only boulevard there was. And if somebody stopped in the street, it wasn't to fight somebody. It was probably to sit and have a yak, talk to one another, visit. We have probably over 150,000 new citizens over the last 20 some odd years, 25, that don't even know their neighbor. We're finding ourselves in situations where we don't know our neighbor. And therefore, there are disagreements on many levels, that don't have to be there. But one of the things I think that would be helpful, is to look at a unity march, a parade, unity parade, getting the schools behind it, getting the clubs of the schools behind it, bringing it in to where we have a day that the entire city can celebrate. We have other festivals, but I think that would be a good opportunity, especially bringing in the multicultural committee, and the youth committee, as well as the Elk Grove Unified and CSD. I think it's time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Becker. Our last speaker is Vanessa.
Hi, Council. I'm glad you're feeling better, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say, I see Lynn Wheat speak here every time, and I really just appreciate what a great citizen advocate she is, and how formidable she is. I really admire her. So, thank you, Lynn. I wanted to let you guys know, I attended the MLK March that was put together by the citizens. I agree completely with Mr. Becker, in regards to the city actually hosting and organizing an MLK March next year. I think it would be amazing to have more of the things that you see in the other big cities, like Sacramento, because we are a big city. We're the second biggest city in the region. To see more of that locally in Elk Grove. And the MLK March that I did attend was lovely, and it was powerful, and we had young youth speaking and singing. And it was really a wonderful experience, and I definitely encourage the city to consider that, pass it maybe to the multicultural committee for some planning. And I also wanted to say that I didn't attend the Race Forum that the Elk Grove School Board held last week, because it was impromptu, and I already had another engagement. But Sac Black Biz did stream it. Thank you for that. And I got to watch it. And the stories of those young children are very powerful. And obviously, like, the unity or MLK March is not going to fix all of that. I am encouraged by the steps that the city has taken, and the way the Elk Grove School Board is taking on this issue. And I would just love to see more of you guys in the community, doing things. In that vein, like, I know we've had a coffee with a cop before. I'd like to see more of that. That way, the youth can engage with the cops, maybe coffee with the mayor, or, you know, I don't know, just like, kind of outside-of-the-box thinking, get you guys into the community, make community members come to a place, maybe, you know, I don't know Lynn Wheat, but we, you know, I see her speak here every time. If I saw her, you know, out in the community, I would say hi to her. And, you know, this is an opportunity for engagement. And just things like that, I think, really go a long way, too. You know, like Randy said, meeting your neighbors, and becoming part of a community, not just, we're not separate people, we're 170,000 people that are chosen to be here. We've committed to living in this community, because we love it, assumingly, and we should love one another, too. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. And seeing that there are no additional speakers, next item, please.
Take us to Section 6, General Administration Information.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, as I think everybody is painfully aware, we've had a water break on Elk Grove Boulevard, just west of Laguna Springs Drive. It started at 1:30 this morning. Sacramento County Water Agency did respond. The break heavily damaged westbound lanes on Elk Grove Boulevard, southbound lanes of Laguna Street's Drive, and adjacent sidewalks. Westbound Elk Grove Boulevard has been closed since the mainline break, while crews clean up, repair the water line, and make temporary repairs to the roadway. One lane on Elk Grove Boulevard, the number one lane closest to the median, is scheduled to be reopened to traffic by 8 o'clock tonight. The southbound number two lane of Laguna Springs Drive will be closed until permanent repairs can be made. There is no estimated time of completion for permanent repairs of the roadways. When permanent repairs are made, all three westbound lanes on Elk Grove Boulevard must be closed. In some, the water break did substantial damage to Elk Grove Boulevard at that intersection. Secondly, the Public Works Department will conduct neighborhood and community outreach workshops to collect feedback on design concepts for the area south of the Civic Center site. A neighborhood workshop was held on Tuesday, January 23. Another community workshop is scheduled February 6 here in council chambers. Also, to let our nonprofit partners know, that the online application period for next year's Community Development Block Grant, Community Services Grant, and Event Sponsorship Grant funding for nonprofit organizations opened last week. A public meeting and technical assistance workshop for these grants will be held on Tuesday, February 13, at 2:30 here in the council chambers. CDBG and CSD applications are due on February 26, while event sponsorship grants are due on March 4. All the guidelines, instructions, and applications are available on our website, in the elkgrowcity.org/grants. Also, to remind you that the city's youth commission will host an encore presentation of your future event this Saturday, as they discussed in their presentation. It'll be this Saturday, on January 27, from 10 to 2, at the Wackford Community Complex. This event will feature speakers that will teach teens to balance their budget, prepare for college, and build a resume, among other life skills. The event is sold out with 130 students registered. Moving to the standing citywide initiatives update, with regard to the Aquatic Center and the Commons, the project is currently behind schedule, but staff is actively working with the contractor to accelerate the project. There is currently no opening date for the Aquatic Center, but staff is working to ensure that it's open to the public as early in the summer as possible, and that the site is ready to accommodate the Amgen Tour activities on May 17. The opening date will largely be dependent upon the weather. With regard to the Civic Center public art, we do have on tonight's agenda the reconsideration of the iconic art piece. With regard to Cameron Road widening and extension, the JPA, that would be the connector, the Southeast Capital Connector Joint Powers Authority, submitted a SB 1 competitive grant application to the Sacramento Transportation Authority Board, for ranking for multiple sections along the connector, including a portion of Cameron east of Big Horn. The grant scope was limited due to grant funding and schedule requirements. We're pleased to note that the SDA Board ranked this project number one in the region. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay. Any questions? Right? No questions? All right. Let's, next item is council comments and reports. Let's start with Councilman Detrick.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I talked to Randy a little bit about his idea over the weekend. Thought it was a great idea to have the city consider taking on that MLK March, and coordinate it with the youth commission, possibly CSD School District, and the multicultural commission is a great idea, if we had consensus from the council to move that forward.
Yeah, I would agree to that.
Yep, I support it.
Okay. Thank you. Tended the school board meeting that was mentioned earlier by Vanessa. It was a good meeting. I had to leave in the middle of it. I had an emergency at my job for PG&E that came up in the middle of it and had to leave. But I was there for about an hour and a half, and very, very touching speakers. And, you know, it's really sad that these events still take place. And I think we're trying to highlight that, and bring, expose that, that it's happening. As I mentioned at the last meeting, I don't know if we'll ever change people, but hopefully, over time, it'll take, you know, it's taken years and years to get this way. It's going to take years to turn the ship, so to speak. And so, I look forward to watching that happen, and be part of that. And we'll keep working at all the little different elements, whether it's CSD, school district, here at the city, as well as, you know, just with our neighbors and friends, opening those communications, and reaching out to people of different cultures to sit down and break bread with. Today, I also gave an update of similar, using the city manager's report, to 60 different real estate agents for Coldwell Banker. And, you know, they're kind of, in my opinion, they're huge ambassadors for the city of Elk Grove, because many of the people that come here, that's the first person that they meet with, and learn about the city. And it kind of sets the stage. And the more knowledge we can give them and share, I think that the better it is for them. And on a side note, to one of the items that's coming up later, the topic came up of the naming, of the renaming of the Civic Center area. And it was pretty much unanimous that they felt the Grove was their number one choice, out of what they had seen online. And then, the last thing is, Councilman Hume and I, before, at 4 o'clock today, had our audit meeting, and two different audits. And both audits came out with very good ratings. There's definitely room for improvement. I'd give it a strong B on both of them, and the goal is to take them to the A level. So, Laura, congratulations to you and the team for, you know, two more good reviews from our auditors. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Councilman Hume.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, as was mentioned by the city manager, the day following the last city council meeting, was a Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting, in which the board members were asked to rank, out of six projects submitted, the priority projects for the region, for the local partnership program, which is the competitive grant money coming under the SB 1, the gas tax. And it was a pretty highly-held belief that because the CTC is going to be flooded with applications, if you're not ranked first or second, you probably won't even be looked at. And so, I'm happy to report that of all the board members on the dais, the connector projects, which is not the whole connector, but portions of Cameron Road and up by Folsom, were either their number one or number two project. And so, far and away, we were ranked number one. I cannot explain what a monumental sh- I cannot explain what a monumental shift that is from the attitude coming out of the Sacramento Transportation Authority from days past, where the Connector, basically the majority of the money is received in the outlying years of the 30-year sales tax measure. So, huge shift, huge win, $20 million on the table. Hopefully, we'll at least be competitive and be granted that money. That would be a big win. Attended the Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce Installation Gala, that was a great event. They gave out some awards to some very deserving people and businesses. I did attend the Elk Grove Unified School District meeting on race relations. I couldn't stay the whole time, my wife was homesick, which she now has blessed me with that, so maybe I should have stayed at the school board meeting, I'd have been better off. But I will echo the comments that Councilmember Detrick made, and with one further point, and that is that I think that it was eye-opening for the administration, at least I hope it was eye-opening for the administration. How many faculty members spoke of problems within the campus environment? And that, to me, means that this isn't just kids who are ratting out other kids. I mean, there's something systemic going on there that they need to address. And we, the Vice Mayor reiterated, and I'll let him speak to it, but reiterated to the school district, we stand ready to partner with them in whatever way we can. Attended a Paratransit Board Retreat, as well as our regularly-scheduled meeting. And then I attended the North State Building Industry Association's Annual Installation Gala, where I received the 2017 Friend of Housing Award. And this recognizes the efforts of an elected official who makes strides to keep homeownership affordable. And the Elk Grove City Council, a prior iteration of it, received the award as a whole, as a body, in the past, but this is the first time an individual council member has received it. So I was very honored to be recognized in that way. I wasn't able to attend RT Monday because of the flu that I'm recovering from, but it was reported out to me that I was reappointed to both Paratransit and the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority, so I'll continue on in the role of vice chair for both of those organizations. We did have an audit committee meeting, as was mentioned. I would maybe grade a little softer than Councilmember Detrick. I think we got an A on the comprehensive annual financial report, which the most important thing in my money that is pulled out of this is that of our general fund revenues, we were about a million and a half to the good. So we brought in a million and a half more than we spent. That's a rarity for government. So congratulations to Laura and to Brad and to their staff, well, to all city staff for making that happen.
I just grade tougher than you do.
That's what I said. If you'd have been paying attention, I know you tune out when I start to talk, but if you'd have been paying attention, I led with, "I grade softer than you." And then finally, have the Connector meeting on Friday. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Vice Mayor?
All right, thank you. I want to start off with a complaint we all received over the weekend about a traffic mitigation improvement that was performed. Yeah, no worries. So, I'm going to let Bob Murdock, if you want to address that issue.
Sure. We recently put up a no-U-turn restriction for northbound traffic on Franklin Boulevard, or, yeah, on Franklin Boulevard as approaches Laguna Boulevard. It was a mitigation for a development. Since we put that up, we received a number of questions and concerns about that. So, what we're going to go ahead and do, trying to be responsive, is we're going to relook at that traffic study. We're going to collect traffic data this week and beginning part of next week, and take another look at that, and see if there's something we can do to mitigate that. So, we hope to have an answer. We put out on Nextdoor, I think, was, we're going to try to have an answer by next Wednesday.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that, and I would echo a lot of the sentiments that were made about how it would affect the businesses on the southeast and southwest corners, not being able to do that. And I know you and I talked briefly over the phone about, maybe we can arrange so the movement's allowed, but after the right, you know, before the right-term movement's able to be put in place. So for folks that may be affected by this, you'll know what I'm talking about.
Vice Mayor, if I can interrupt real quickly, is there any efforts to reach out to those that have sent in emails and have reached out to us?
Yes, we've been trying to reach out through Nextdoor and also emails, letting them know that we're relooking at it and what the timeline is.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I've responded to most of those that have come in as well.
Yes, so have I. I've responded to all of them, and I've copied Jason, and Jason's packaged them up and given those to Bob to put together an email list. And once we get something definitive, if we can shoot something back to these folks.
Yeah. And then in the future, we talked about, maybe if something this significant, we'll let folks know ahead of time that might be, their typical driving patterns might be disrupted. So, appreciate that, Bob. Okay. Another thing I wanted to bring up is, in March, and I saw Angela's up there earlier, and I see Judy Teflon in the audience, the Art Advocacy Project, it's doing its first arts beat. It's inaugural arts expo. And the kickoff is on March 1st over at the Fall Center. I have some flyers here, we'll leave in the back. And also, Judy, Judy, you want to raise your hand? Judy and Angela, you want to raise your hand back there? If you guys have any questions. I think you have almost 60 events that are booked already right now, singing, dancing, art in all forms. And so I'm looking forward to that event. I think it's going to be a lot of fun. I heard the mayor might be putting up a piece of art, maybe, for auction? I don't know.
Dancing?
Or maybe it would be dancing. So anyway, I think it's pretty neat for us to, as a city, to start incorporating art into our community, and I thank the Art Advocacy Project for all their efforts in pushing that forward. As far as events, I dropped in on elkgrovenews.net, it's one of our social media news, I don't want to say blog, but it's a news outlet, and local covers news stories. They have their 10-year anniversary, so I dropped in on there. And for better or worse, all of us up here are sometimes complimented or criticized on there. So we take it all in good spirits. And then the MLK March, was honored to participate in that as well. And for folks who don't know, Sam Stark's of our community and Elk Grove resident is one of the, or is the primary leader of that huge event each year, so I want to give him some props. Attended the Elk Grove Unified School District's, called a racial town hall, and as well as many of the council here. I had the opportunity to address the school board and let them know that we are stand-ready to partner with them in making sure that we always maintain an inclusive and tolerant community. Also attended the Women's March, that was a fantastic event as well. I think it grew, I think last year might have been 20,000, I think it grew to 30,000 this year. It was just an incredible showing of support, not just for women, but equality everywhere. And then got to see firsthand, or witness firsthand, my fellow Councilman Hume, I received his award, rightfully deserved. And then the Project Ride Crab Feed, we got to, attended that briefly to see how some folks and witness, you know, over 1,800 people, if you can imagine that, 1,800 people in one hall, enjoying crab and supporting a great organization. And then, oh, finally, to piggyback off of what was, Councilman Hume mentioned earlier about STA picking the Southeast Connector as its number-one project for SAICOG, I'm very pleased to support that for the Trade Corridor Enhancement Program. It's another grant program through the CTC. We selected, and this is out of 22 cities and six counties, so 28 local government organizations, we selected four projects to submit for that grant program. And this is, we asked for, for Cammer Road. Cammer Road was one of them, so I'm very pleased that that went through, $25 million that we're requesting there. So, as Councilman Hume mentioned, it's great to see the region supporting the Connector and Cammer Road, and recognizing that is such an important project for this region. And with that, that's all I had. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Two events that I wanted to highlight is Relay for Life, which is an opportunity for the American Cancer Society to have a celebration of life and celebration of the efforts in which they put forward in the city of Elk Grove. Had the opportunity to present a check to the American Cancer Society, and they're very grateful. So, thank you for, thank the council and also administration for pushing hard on that. The other opportunity I wanted to highlight is, it met with a number of students, and they wanted to celebrate the Week of Kindness, which they do on a yearly basis. And this certainly fits right into some of the efforts in which the school district will be, you know, putting forward in terms of a response to the activities out of Pleasant Grove. The only other two thing that I want to bring up is sanitation was canceled today, and air quality is scheduled for tomorrow. And that is all. And let's move to the next item.
Take us to Section 8, the Consent Calendar Items.
Okay. So, seeing that there are no members of the public sign up to speak, want to close, open and close public comment, and...
Move the consent calendar.
Right, got a motion, got a second, all in favor? I oppose the motion. All right, next item.
Take us to Section 9, our public hearings, starting with item 9.1, which is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Elk Grove Triangle Special Planning Area, increasing the maximum site coverage allowance from 20% to 25% for the special subdivision areas, and a minor deviation to exceed the maximum lot coverage requirement in the Elk Grove Triangle SBA for only the property located at 9763 Capelua Lane.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Suen, members of the Elk Grove City Council, Antonio Ablog, Planning Manager and Project Planner for item 9.1 this evening, which is the Elk Grove Triangle Special Planning Area Amendment and Minor Deviation. This project consists of two parts. The first part is an amendment to the special planning area. That amendment request is to increase the structural lot coverage from the currently-allowed 20% to a 25% structural lot coverage. That would include the house, any accessory structures, and so forth. But that would only apply to the special subdivision areas, which are already called out in that special planning area. Those special subdivision areas are Capelua, Silvergate, and Van Rutten. The second portion of this project is a minor deviation to go slightly above that 25% to a 25.7% lot coverage, only for the property located at 9763 Capelua Lane. As far as the special planning area, it's located in the southeast section of the city, roughly bounded by Bond Road, Bradshaw Road, and Grantline Road. The special subdivisions where this 25% lot coverage would take effect are Van Rutten, Silvergate, and Capelua. That's outlined in the map before you. As far as those special subdivisions, they're already called out in the SBA for more permissive setback standards. And that goes to the fact that they are smaller lots than the rest of the special planning area, they're one-acre lots versus some of the other lots, which increase in size up to two and three acres. As far as the specific site requesting the minor deviation to go above that 25%, it's depicted on the map on the screen. It's generally surrounded by single-family homes on large lots, generally one acre in Before you is the site plan for the 9763 Capelua site. The overall lot is in the larger outline, with the proposed development outlined in the smaller outline in red. The request to increase the lot coverage stemmed from the fact that they are proposing a 2,800-square-foot detached accessory structure. This accessory structure is sized in order to house recreational vehicles, so they can be stored inside, instead of out on the street or in the driveway, where they will not be, where they could be not visible. When combined with the main residence, which is currently under construction, the RV and boat storage garage would increase the coverage for that one lot to 25.7%. The plans for the garage are shown before you. These plans are consistent with the architecture and design of the main house under construction, and they are consistent with the neighboring homes in the Capelua subdivision. Again, to briefly summarize, the SPA amendment request, it is a request to go from a 20% structural coverage to a 25% structural coverage. Outside of the special planning area, there is no distinct structural lot coverage requirement. The requirement is simply that you cannot exceed a 75% impervious surface on your whole lot. Therefore, outside the SBA, you could reach a higher, very much higher number than the 25% structural lot coverage that's restricted in the Triangle Special Planning Area. Again, beyond the 25% amendment to the SBA, there is a minor deviation request that goes along with that for the specific site. That would only increase the lot coverage to 25.7%. Staff believes this minor deviation is appropriate, as it would allow the indoor storage of some of those recreational vehicles, or where they would be stored out of sight from the public right of way. This project was heard by the Planning Commission at its hearing on December 21st, 2017. Ultimately, the Planning Commission did recommend in favor for this request, and tonight, I'm forwarding that request to the city council, which is a request to introduce the ordinance approving the special planning area amendment, and to adopt a resolution approving the minor deviation to exceed the maximum lot coverage for the 9763 Capelua Lane property. We did receive some comments from the public earlier this afternoon, those were distributed, and I'd be happy to address those if that's the wish of the council. That concludes my presentation, and the applicant is also here, should there be any questions.
Okay, any questions? Nope? Questions? Go ahead.
One quick one, Antonio.
Yes.
What is the setback from the back of the proposed garage structure to the rear of the lot?
50 feet.
50 feet, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? No? All right, thank you, sir. Okay, want to declare a public hearing open. I want to invite the applicant to the podium, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, City of Elk Grove staff. Thank you for your time and giving me this opportunity. A special thank to those involved in recommending my project for city council approval. As Mr. Ablog mentioned, I'm requesting to build an accessory structure to house, like, recreational vehicles. My project would be in addition to my family's dream and retirement home. We are a big family of eight brothers and two sisters, with, all married with their kids, and we live in Elk Grove for almost 30 years, and we love everything about Elk Grove community. So we decided to build our nest and retirement home here in Elk Grove. We'd like, we'd also want to contribute to the ongoing development in the Capelua Commons community by including our dream home. We want to help the community to grow and hope that we'll get the opportunity to do so. And again, thank you for your time and hoping for your kind consideration on my project.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Questions? No? Okay. Nope, no questions.
Actually, I do have one question.
Sure.
He may have said it in the staff report, but I just want to make sure it was clear. Now, you ran this by your association, and they've supported your project as proposed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, actually, the members are here to speak out if needed. And yes, that's the first thing, is to get through the CCNRs and they approve before we go to the City of Elk Grove for...
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, at this point, I want to open public comment. I see that there are a number of people signed up to speak. First speaker is Anthony Meeks, following Anthony is Mike Lewis.
Good evening, Anthony Meeks. I am one of the homeowners immediately adjacent to this project...
Can you point the mic towards your mouth? Thank you.
My name's Anthony Meeks, and I'm a homeowner immediately adjacent to this project, to the east. I fully support the effort. I don't have any complaints or problems with it, and anything I can do to move it forward, I'm more than happy to do so. I think it would be an awesome addition to our community. These are upper-end homes, and I think it's a wonderful project, to be honest with you. No complaints, no objections, and fully supportive. No complaints, no objections, and fully supportive. Okay?
Perfect. Thank you. Mike Lewis, following Mike is John McAtee.
Mike Lewis, I actually live in the house behind the home in question, and I first saw it in an article in the Elk Grove Citizen, and at the very end of the article, the Planning Commissioner Chair mentioned the Nearby Homeowners Association appears to be supportive, and so I can support recommending it to the City Council. So my wife immediately contacted one of our homeowners association members, and she was not aware of this. And she said our homeowners association has not heard of this whatsoever. I received an email from her, actually, she sent it to my wife. I met with the other two homeowners association last night, and each homeowner is association to what is happening in the whole Triangle area. Basically, the plan was that all building out in the Triangle area is in acre lots in our community. We actually could be surrounded by tract... She just goes into, they want to keep it as it is. This was all three homeowners associations met last night and mentioned that they're opposed to this proposal. That's all I wanted to say.
Mr. Lewis, you said you live behind...
I am directly behind the house. And what hap... May I say something?
Yeah.
Anthony had actually planted some beautiful aptos trees that kind of blocked off our property, and when he sold the property, the new homeowners stopped watering those trees, and those trees died. And now those trees were all cut out last year, and now I have a beautiful view of what will be a very nice, large garage.
Well, coincidentally, that's where I was going, is would a screen, some sort of screening, would that be...
It sure would help. But I... It would help me personally.
Yeah.
But then the next concern is lot next to me is also going to be, has not been built out yet, behind me, which is behind one of my neighbors, and is it going to be the same thing here? They can do whatever they want as well. And, you know, we all live by the 20% rule, that's how we all were, and now all of a sudden, we can, you know, can I build up to 25% on my lot? That was our concern. And again, my big thing was, it says the homeowners associations were all in support of it, and obviously, I can tell you, ours specifically wasn't. One of the board member's husband is speaking next, and she emailed us this morning and said, no, all three met last night, and all three were opposed to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. John McAtee, following John is Ron Stark.
Good evening, council members, thanks for the time. I'm a 25-year resident of Elk Grove, so I love the city. I've been living in Silvergate, which is one of the associations or one of the areas that they're looking to make this change for. And I guess I would say, you know, just to set context, the nice picture probably doesn't do it justice because three of those, all three of those neighborhoods, roughly 98% is built out, with the exception of maybe 10 lots that was part of initially Capelua, you know, and that went on to be zoned out for one to one and a half acre lots. So, Antonio, I would love it if you would have come to talk to our homeowners association. I don't think the City Council or City Planning Group ever did that. I, you know, to Mike's comment, if you polled the three associations, which are probably the best way to get to those residents, I guarantee you a large percentage of the population in each of those areas would say no. And the reason is, we bought in 15 years ago, knowing there's a certain lot size, house size that was going to fit on that lot. You look at the picture, and a home like that is probably best for a two-acre lot. 98% of the homes are on one acre or smaller. There's only roughly 10 homes that are probably two acres max, I would say. So I think that's where, from my point of view, it's after the fact that, you know, I love the fact that a man wants to build a nice big house. To me, it would have been better suited for a two-acre environment versus these three, this little Triangle area community where it's typically one acres. Biggest house is about 4,500 square feet. I would ask each of you to go look at the house, and then look at the surrounding neighborhoods. Every house has larger setbacks, you know, it's not as condensed in terms of the house. So I just think it would be a travesty, and I'm, you know, shame on me for not being at that planning meeting, because it, to me, it's surprising that the Planning Commission would rule to increase the lot size for all three of those communities when, you know, it's one house, maybe 10 houses out of 250 in those three, in our three communities. So I ask you guys to at least hold off accepting that, and I don't know if you're ruling tonight, I think you're supposed to rule tonight, but to me, to rule tonight on something like this without full understanding of the situation between Capelua, Van Rutten and Silvergate would be a travesty in my mind. I mean, I'm not going to, in my, we have CCNRs, so we have 70 homes in our community. They're not going to go, you know, change the CCNRs because of this, probably, because we want a look and feel to our community. And that means we don't want to have, you know, 70% of your home on a given lot line. So, you know, I don't know when you rule on it, if you're ruling on it tonight, I would say hold off. It would be unfortunate, because I don't think the Planning Commission did all their due diligence to look at and get feedback from all the residents.
John, just a quick question for you. Do you think you can eyeball, discern, you know, visually discern the difference between 20% and 25% lot coverage?
I would ask you, have you gone, looked at this house and how it sits on the footprint versus the other, versus the other homes in that area? You would see the difference?
Okay, thank you.
Easily, easily. And it's, like I said, it's 10 homes out of roughly 250. Everybody else, fully built out. It's very unlikely they're going to go build a bigger house or do an addition, you know, that it would encroach on their existing footprint. So I would say this, if you want, if you want to make an exception, make it for those 10 homes, you know, which isn't probably what we all want, but it doesn't penalize at least our neighborhood, our Silvergate Association. We don't want that imposed on us because one man wants to build a bigger home than he was. He read the CCNRs, I guarantee you. I don't know why they, I would, I'd question whether they approved beyond what the regulation was. So the existing, and today, the house fits that existing regulation. What doesn't is the addition of that add-on, so...
And so would your suggested compromise of only having it apply to the remaining lots yet to be built, is because you don't want to see your neighbors now coming in and putting 5% more on their lots?
Exactly, exactly. And I feel bad for Mike, because his backyard's got a backup to those things, so if somebody wants to put a big, you know, go put a big outbuilding next to him, and you guys vote that that's okay, he's got to look at it or plant a bunch of trees. You know, so it is impactful, and I just look at it as it's after the fact. We all moved there knowing what the rules were. That was 20 years ago that was set up. 98% of that community is built out. There's plenty of other area, little homeowners in the area that are two acres or above. You know, that's where you put a big house with a big outbuilding. Most of these, most of these lots are right around an acre or less, you know, and his, sounds like his is.
Thank you, John.
So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Ron Stark, following Ron is Sherry Lachlan.
Mayor, City Council, I'll be brief. I echo their comments. I live right next door to Mr. Lewis, and when my wife and I moved in there, we, what intrigued us about the area was that there was no more than 20% of the lot could be the home and any outbuildings. So that really was attracted us to the area because of all the open space, essentially is what you have with that. This house will be built right behind us. I have nothing against the applicant and his desire to build the dream home for his family. I think that's awesome. I'm sure that he knew going into this what the rules were for the area, and I just, I oppose the fact that we are changing the rules for one person coming in wanting to do something different, especially when they knew what the rules were to begin with. So that is why I oppose it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sherry Lachlan, and following Sherry is Eddie Collins.
Good evening, my name is Sherry, and I'm also here to oppose the lot increase in the Elk Grove Triangle. I went to Elk Grove High School, my children went to Elk Grove High School. I've seen Elk Grove grow and grow and grow. We are an original owner in Silvergate, and one of the reasons that we bought the home is because you can sit in your backyard, you can look at the stars, you don't see obstructive buildings in your way. I again have no, I have no, nothing against the homeowners that want to, you know, encage their motor vehicles or whatever, but I just think it should be on another lot that was built for that. We all live by the CCNRs. We bought the home reading the CCNRs, and I'm just want to voice my opinion that I oppose, at least for the Silvergate area, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Eddie Collins is our last speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Eddie Collins, and I am the property owner of the lot adjacent to the lot at hand. I have no opposition to the building of this structure at all. As I said, we live lateral to each other. It's not going to pose us a problem. Our house should be going up soon, as we are neighbors. And I really don't think it would pose a problem anyone else. Those individuals that live directly behind us shouldn't pose a problem either. I think we should vote on it tonight and be approved tonight as well. I don't see any problem with this construction of his residence. As I stated before, I'll be very short and brief. That's basically all I have to say. I'm in prayer that you will go ahead and vote on it tonight, and we get an approval on it, because again, it will not pose me a problem at all. And my house is not going to be as large, obviously, but even then, it's not going to pose a problem. So I don't see any issue. Okay? Anything for, any commentary for me? All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Jason, do I see this right? Is this the applicant that signed up to speak?
That is correct. I just have the name back up, just so we have that, so...
Okay, all right. So I'm going to close public comment, and would like to invite the applicant to offer a closing statement.
I understand the differing comments or objection. Again, the outstructure is 50 feet away from the fence, which is bound there, I mean, have grown up like a redwood trees already, right behind my fence, so it's really out of the sight of my neighbor, whatever. And their CCNRs are different from the Capelua Common CCNRs. The CCNRs, as far as I, when I start dealing with the City of Elk Grove Planning Commission, the Capelua Common CCNR is the built minimum of 4,500 square feet or 4,000 square feet. And anything, any recreational vehicles cannot be parked on the driveway or on the street. So that made me decide, you know, hopefully, you know, our dream home could be built there with a motorhome or recreational vehicle structure that I can house my RV or boat. Again, the Van Rutten and Silvergate CCNRs are whole different CCNRs from Capelua Commons community. And I'm hoping for your kind consideration and approval of my project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Can declare the public hearing closed, and council deliberation and direction. Gentlemen?
Antonio, maybe you can give me some numbers it'll make, so I don't have to do the math here longhand. Can you tell me the square footages of the two covered patios? It looks like 1355 maybe and 629?
Correct.
That's correct? You have a total of that number offhand? All right, four, carry the one. Eight, nine, 1984, okay?
Yeah, 1984.
Antonio, even though I'm given this is, we have three different communities here, is it even possible to limit this allowance to only these few lots if we were to do that?
It could be possible to do a specific restriction for those properties covered by the Capelua Common CCNR, which is where I believe a majority of those 10 undeveloped lots are.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I mean, I'm trying to balance, you know, our own criteria about keeping RVs off the street or enclosed. We don't want to go down that path again for...
No, we don't.
Folks can do some history if that didn't make sense to you. And so, but also trying to be respectful of the surrounding community, and then recognizing the distance from the fence line. So what I'm pondering is perhaps restricting it to that, and then if, you know, if you go above the 20%, you're required to provide some landscape screening that would minimize the impacts or visual impacts of what folks behind would see. Those are my initial thoughts.
I'll just continue my line of questioning regarding the math involved, so I can make sure I'm looking at good figures here. At a lot size of 45,475, which is a little bit over one acre, 22% of that, which would be the 20% lot coverage plus the 2% devi, or 10% deviation, is it a 10% deviation?
Yes.
That's allowed by Rite?
10% for the minor deviation.
So that would be 22% total that would be permitted by Rite?
Correct.
Is that correct? So I get that as being an acreage of, or excuse me, a square footage of 10,004 and a half feet. 6932 is the main dwelling, 1984 is the covered patios, that comes out for a total of 8916 square feet, just absorbed by the main structure, which then if you subtract that from that 10,004 square feet, would only leave 1,088 and a half feet, is that correct? So we'd be talking, the difference between 22% and 25.7% is 2,800 square feet down to 1,088 square feet?
That sounds about correct. If you think about the 5% as part of a one-acre lot, approximately 2,400 square feet.
Okay.
This is a tough call on this, because as was mentioned, this is what the folks, this is what they bought, so to speak. They bought the farm. Now they don't like what they bought, and they want something different. As mentioned, all the SPA in the area, I think we, and Antonio, what was the current Capelua, what does their CCNR say? I know that we don't really get into that side of it, but I don't like to be in conflict with the CCNRs either.
Yes, I'm not familiar with what the Capelua CCNRs, whether those restrict the lot coverage in that subdivision or not. They could restrict it further than what the city allows, but they would not be able to promote projects which exceed the city's, or the SPA's 20% lot coverage, but whether it's different than our 20% or not, I can't say.
I'm going to have to go along with, everybody bought in there knowing what they were buying, and I'm not going to... and I'm not going to support going to the additional coverage.
Antonio, I have a question. In, in the event that these, is it 10 remaining lots?
Yes.
There was an exception made for them. Would this require an outreach back to the associations and the different groups?
It would be an amendment to the overall SPA. I would probably defer to our city attorney whether we have to re-advertise that, or whether that amendment can be made to the request this evening.
Mr. Mayor, it would not be required to go back to the HOAs. You could certainly do that as a courtesy to let them know what's going on, but as a matter of law, you would not be required to do that.
I'd be curious, in the event that we go in that direction, you know, I would love to hear from the housing associations, so...
So one of the things that is dangerous when you do that, if you give an exception to somebody in the same development, you give them an exception, the other people are going to say it's an unfair advantage, they may want to come back and do the same thing. It's pretty hard to limit it without, because then it becomes discriminatory, in my opinion.
I just heard them say that no one else wants it, and that if you, Mr. Lewis was speaking in favor, you just, you limit it to these 10, because everywhere else is built out already.
What happens if they want to come back and put an auxiliary dwelling in that exceeds the 20%?
I've heard the testimony that the likelihood of that is very slim, plus if you don't allow...
Well, one of the reasons it's slim, because they can't do it.
Right, well...
They'd never come in and do it, because they knew they couldn't do it.
And that, I think, and I heard that that's what, they don't want to, the representatives here tonight didn't, don't want that, don't want that to occur, anyway. So they don't, you're right, they don't want that to be the case, or be allowed.
They don't want it at all. They don't want any exceptions either.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, go ahead.
So if I can take a trip in the Wayback Machine and go back to when the Triangle area was first put together, and the Silvergate subdivision was approved by the county, and so the county really broke the cellophane that this was an acceptable land use within that area. I was still on Planning Commission at the time, but I thought that if it's acceptable in one part of the area, it should be acceptable in other parts of the area, and so I fought to have Van Rutten and Kapalua approved. And, but we wanted to recognize that this was a, an act of feathering from more intensive development up into the rural area, and that therefore there ought to be special considerations put into place with that. And one of those was the lack of streetlights, so that the young lady can sit in her backyard and see the stars. We didn't want the, the light pollution that would typically happen within urban developments. The other was setback requirements, the other was lot coverage. And the reason we, we put that into, and then the other was Class C streets, so there's no curb, gutter, and sidewalk. And all of these things were meant to convey a different feel, as was mentioned by the folks who were early buyers into that development, so that it didn't feel like a traditional subdivision. It didn't feel like houses were stacked on top of one another. It did have some elbow room, so to speak. Now here's the, the issue with this particular request and how it's, it's being addressed, is it's, it's pulling at the, at the threads of the sweater of all of those original intentions. Now I'm, as many of you know, working to try and figure out a, a global solution to the Triangle area for the southern end of the Triangle area, because it simply has been put forward that it's not feasibly to develop at its current designation, and there's some improvements that have to happen without the development, that doesn't happen, yada, 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 that's a discussion for another evening. But what I'm not in favor of doing is where you just start chipping away at what you already have in place, because somebody comes along and wants to do something a little bit different. Now let's talk about what that little bit different is. This garage is massive, 50 feet deep by, it looks like 30 feet across. Do I have that fairly close, Antonio?
Yes.
So that's not just for an RV and a boat, that's like a 10-car garage. It's huge. But, but more important than that is that if we were to allow this exception and say, okay, now all of the lots are permitted a 25% lot coverage rather than a 20% lot coverage, that's a difference of, sorry, my phone, 2,178 square feet per acre lot. So that means every one of these people that have an acre lot come forward and go, you know what, I want to build a 2,000-square-foot poolhouse, casita, and now I'm allowed to do so by Rite. So now you've essentially just doubled the density of that area with one fell stroke of the pen. And I, I mean, that's just, I can't, I can't see doing that. If we can come to some compromise where he builds a smaller structure, and it's limited to a few amounts of lots, maybe I could get on board with that. But this broad stroke that would allow everybody to drop a second house on their one acre lot, I can't go along with that, I'm sorry. And Mr. Meeks, it's great to see you. I haven't seen you since those Planning Commission days. You're looking well, my friend.
So just to tease that out, is there a size that we could, you would be wanting to propose to the applicant to consider?
Yeah, within the 20%.
Okay, well, I heard that perspective. All right. Is that the same?
Well, no. I mean, obviously, if he gets the, the extra 2% by Rite is a 10% deviation, but that only gets him to a 1,000-foot structure when he's proposing a 2,800-foot structure.
I think part of the purpose on that is, so you could build a casita, right? So you could build a casita and not, not build another, basically, he's building another house.
Right.
Equivalent of another house. He's putting two houses on one lot, as far as footprints.
So, I mean, it does, and, and you guys both make valid, valid points, but also gets to, you know, as I think about aging population and what we're, you know, on, on, based on my typical, and I know where some of you guys live, so on our typical lots, being able to house multi-generations is not at all an option. But it does, it would change look and feel, but it is something that we are facing. So where else would you do something like that if you wanted to age in place?
Mayor, members of the city council, I just want to correct a point that I heard a couple of times, that 10% is not by Rite, that's a discretionary act by the council. You could approve up to 10%, but that would, that would require your approval, it's not a by Rite approval.
I, I think where I'm struggling here is, Councilman Hugh brought a good point, the feathering, right? We, there's a logic behind the policy, and my, I'm glad you brought that up, because now, I'm thinking along those lines, if we were to remain consistent and true to a policy that's in place, then how does this impact it? That's the real question that I have. It would, it would change.
As far as, so this request doesn't affect the, the lot size, it just affects the structural covers, coverage of the lots themselves. It doesn't allow any additional units on the site, it doesn't allow any additional secondary dwellings, it just affects how much of the structure, or how much of the lot you can cover by the structures you're allowed to build.
But I think going back to the feathering policy that we, you know, have been very supportive of, it changes the feel of it. That's where I'm, I'm struggling with. Members? Thoughts?
Well, it absolutely changes the feel of it. So if you look at page three of the staff report, which shows the subject site, and you look at these folks that are in Silvergate, I'm going to guess those homes are maybe in the 3,000 to a little over 3,000 square foot?
Yeah.
Right? Okay.
37 is the biggest.
Okay, so basically, take each one of those houses north of the lot we're talking about, and plop another one on that same lot.
Yeah.
I mean, you're talking about 2,100 square feet versus 3,100 square feet.
Right.
Right. Call for the vote.
Okay. Right. So we have staff recommendation. Do I have a motion? No?
Well, I, I guess if we can't, I mean, I thought we were going to talk about some sort of compromise, but we're not going to talk about a compromise.
Well, I mean, you know, I would like to try to talk, find a compromise. If we can't, then we can't. I'd ask the applicant, is there, is there a smaller size you'd be, how many, how big do you need for the, for the RV storage, and is there a smaller size you'd be willing to live with? Can we ask the applicant to approach the podium?
Come on up.
Right up front now, it's kind of hard to tell, but I'm willing to compromise as long as I can house the recreational vehicle. I mean, I can get the casita out if, if that's a problem. Again, I'm willing, and I'm a good citizen, and want everybody, you know, happy with the neighborhood and...
Let me ask this question, Antonio, if you, if, if we were to, our flexibility to use the 10% and go up to 22%, with his house square footage and that removed from the available square footage, what does it have left?
The, the proposed garage, I believe, is 2,800 square feet, and as Councilmember Hugh mentioned, the difference between the, the 10% that's allowed per the minor deviation, the 25% requested is approximately, was that 1,800 square feet? That's the, that's the delta between what you're looking at, that you could do under the minor deviation, 22% versus what they're requesting at this time. So it's, it could be a combination of reducing some of those covered patios, and reducing the size of that garage to get to the 22% that's available through the minor deviation.
That, to me, that would be the compromise, is going to 22%. If you, if you could lower it down to 22%, I could live with that, but I can't go any more than that.
Yeah, just gonna, most of the square footages are covered patio. Should have known, I could have cut the covered patio right now, but fortunately, it's already under construction, the main house, which is in compromise, the covered patio and porch.
Is the roofline incorporated into the covered patio?
Yes, sir.
I understand.
Unfortunately, if it's not part of the roofline, it can be done right now, can be cut off, but the structure and trusses are already part of the porch and covered patio.
I'm confused, you're under construction right now?
Oh, the main house.
Yes, yes, the house is built, the house is almost built.
Well, the main house is, what I'm requesting right now is the detached garage to be added to the main.
He already has the permits for the house.
Oh, the main house, yeah, okay.
I'm not, I'm not going to build until you, you guys are approving my, you know, additional structure.
So I think that, one of the questions, can you go down to 22% then, on your, on your garage?
On the garage, yeah.
Yeah, that, I have to redesign the whole thing, you know, I'm...
That's, that's obvious that you'll have to do that.
Yeah.
So are you willing to do that, or that's, you want to have this item held over? Because I don't think there's a consensus to do anything more than that here.
What he's saying is, as you heard the city attorney say, it requires council approval to give you that 2, or that 10% deviation, which would get you up to 22% lot coverage. I think there's consensus, we're willing to do that much tonight, but we're not willing to go to the 25%. So that would drop you down from a 2,800-foot structure to a 1,088-foot structure. If you'd like to take that tonight, I think there's consensus to do that. If you'd like to either have us reject your application, or hold it over for future discussion, although I don't see the merit in that, we could do that.
So I'm just curious that if I go with the 1,800 square foot, I'm, I just have to do the math, if I can still house my RV garage? And I'm...
So just to, just to be clear, it's not 1,800 square feet that you would end up with, it's about 1,800 square feet that is the difference. You'd go down to just over 1,000 square feet. So if you took your 600-square-foot casita, that would leave you with 400 square feet for your garage?
Yeah, actually, the casita is 600 square feet, and the storage is part of that detached structure, is 400 square feet, and that leaves to like a 1,800 square feet, basically.
Yeah, and we don't, we won't make you figure out the math up here, but I think that, like Councilman Hugh was mentioning, is I think there's consensus to afford you that, that much leniency, and then if it doesn't work for you, you don't have to go forward with it. But at this point, I'm going to go out on a limb here and say, the, the original proposal will be rejected, and we're willing to give, to grant this permission, and you can make do with it with, you know, you can go figure out the math and see if it works for you, or, and then not build at all if you don't want, or, or build what you can.
Could we take another approach on this? Could we approve up to 22% tonight for whatever he proposes for the secondary garage?
You can...
And reject the proposal for tonight on the full...
That's what I think is, is being considered. So what you would be doing, there's two separate items here, there's the ordinance, which would get you to the 25%, it doesn't sound like there's consensus for that. The other option would be a 10% minor deviation. I'm comfortable that you could approve that tonight. One of the struggles with that is, I don't know what the, what the final design is going to look like. What you might want to do is have that go back to the planning staff to make sure that it works within the lot configuration. The cleaner approach might be, although it might not be satisfactory to everyone either on the council for the applicant, is to deny this tonight, if that's the will of the council, have the applicant reapply with a new minor deviation. That would go back through the Planning Commission, and it wouldn't necessarily come to council unless there's an appeal, but that way you'd give the applicant time to figure out on the lot whether or not this even works, because I'm certainly not designing his project, but it's not really sounding like the 1,000 or so square feet is going to work, if I'm hearing him correctly. It might be cleaner just kind of get a fresh slate.
I like that.
But I leave that to the council.
Okay.
Well, I have a problem with that, because putting my layman's hat on, I just heard more fees calculated.
Yeah, I suppose, I suppose you're right.
Yeah, I was just going to ask that. Yeah, what sort of cost would that be?
To me, that's double injury, that's salting the wound. I would say, I'll make the motion that we reject the 25%, we approve up to 22%. Work out with planning department staff, see if it works for you.
Second.
Okay, got a motion second?
I'm taking the 22%. I'm, I'll be working with the planning.
And you got a good idea exactly what that means, Antonio?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, abstention? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Just a note for the public hearing for item 9.2, and for the public hearing for item 9.3, those were continued to the regular meeting of February 14th, 2018, which takes us on to item 9.4, which is a public hearing to consider the 47th annexation to Community Facilities District Number 2,006-1 for Maintenance Services.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, and members of the city council. I am Cara Taylor Seaman, Finance Analyst with the City of Elk Grove, here to discuss the public hearing for an annexation into the city's Maintenance District. I do have a brief presentation that I'm willing to waive in the interest of time if it suits the council.
Cara, I'm going to propose that we waive the presentation unless...
Sounds good.
We love seeing you, Cara.
Nice to see you too, thank you.
Thank you, Cara. At this point, I want to declare a public hearing for CFT 2,006-1 open. Want to open for public comment, seeing that no members of the public have signed up to speak, want to close public comment, want to declare public hearing for 2,006-1 closed, and I'll open, I'm open for a motion.
Motion one?
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose, abstention? Right, I'd like to request the results of the ballot tabulation, please.
Of one possible vote, one affirmative vote was cast, authorizing the City of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. Resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Okay, motion two?
Motion two.
Got a motion, got a second, all in favor? Aye, pose, abstention? Motion three?
Motion three, introduce and waive the forereading by substitution of title only, and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax and territory annex to Community Facilities District Number 2,006-1 Maintenance Services, Annexation Number 47, and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.19.010.
Second.
Okay, got a motion second, all in favor? Aye. Pose, abstention? All right, next item.
Take us to Section 10, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item 10.1, which is receive a presentation on the retail sector of the Elk Grove economy and provide direction as appropriate.
Can we waive the presentation? No, just kidding.
My colleagues would appreciate that.
I want to hear it.
Good afternoon, Mr., or evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and members of the council. I am Darrell Don, I'm your Economic Development Director. Hold on a second. Do this every time? Okay. All right, so I'm here to talk to you tonight about retail, to give you an update on the retail sector in Elk Grove, talk to you about some of our strengths and weaknesses, and also give you an update on certain projects that we've been working on. So for purposes of this report and this presentation, we're defining retail as brick and mortar shops. and mortar shops, restaurants and entertainment facilities that taken together are often referred to as lifestyle amenities. We'll talk a little bit about online retail, but our focus here is brick and mortar. Just to give you a quick little background, earlier on your agenda, you approved an update on the city council goals and imperatives. There are several on there that address retail, entertainment and dining. I've labeled them here, goal one and goal three in particular. Then you have a number of strategic imperatives that staff provided as an update of projects that we are working on, all of which will be touched on throughout the presentation. So first, let's talk about the importance of retail. Retail is critically important to the city of Elk Grove on a number of fronts. First is employment. Retail accounts for 21, 26% of the city's employment base. It is virtually tied for the top employment sector in the city and it is one of the higher performing sectors, anecdotally speaking, I don't have data on this, but I have to imagine, for employing Elk Grove residents. Sales tax, so retail sales tax is the city's largest revenue source. The current fiscal year, 2017-18 budget predicts $25.4 million of sales tax revenues for the city. That equates to 38% of the general fund. You can see on the chart on the right, it is our, not only is it our largest employment sector, it is our largest general fund revenue generator. Incidentally, auto and fuel transactions account for 42% of our sales tax receipts and on, in a lot of ways, that is too high. We'll get into that a little bit. It's very critical for business attraction and quality of life. Lifestyle amenities are critical in terms of making us a competitive city for attracting businesses and particularly the multicultural millennial employees that increasingly make up the workforce of the kinds of businesses we would like to attract. And it also enhances business and leisure travel, which the cool kids are now calling blezier. So there's a fun buzzword for you tonight. You are councilman. No, I'm kidding, yes, you're all very cool, but blezier, so I like buzzwords, so I thought I'd throw that in. This is our current retail landscape in the city. It's really divided into several corridors and a number of smaller nodes. This does not include all the retail in the city, but it's intended to give you a bird's eye view of everything that's going on. If you dig a little bit deeper, you will see, and one of the points of this report tonight is that we are a very value and commodity focused retail environment. We are not yet a high-end retail environment. Certainly, value and commodity are important though, and that's how all of our residents meet their daily shopping needs. This is our primary trade area. This was developed by the city's retail consultant, a company called Retail Strategies out of Birmingham, Alabama. It's important for a city to identify its primary trade area. The primary trade area is always bigger than the city limits. Retail trade does not care about city limits. We care about city limits. Retailers, developers, landlords, brokers and residents, they generally don't. They care about meeting their shopping needs. So our primary trade area extends north of the city up to downtown, encompasses the entirety or nearly the entirety of Elk Grove and then extends down to Galt. This is not science, this is art. So, you know, five different consultants would give you five different retail trade areas, but they would generally look like this for Elk Grove. Our competitive position, we are fifth in per capita sales out of seven competitors that we track. The graph on the bottom is incredibly simple and I can't reveal the actual dollar amounts of per capita sales, but we, we are seventh, we are just edging out Stockton and Citrus Heights and we are behind to these other cities that we all know, West Sacramento, Folsom, Rancho Cordova and the city of Sacramento. We have about 7.5% of Sacramento County retail stores, that's a very low number. That equates to about 5 million square feet out of 50 million in the region. So we are about 10.3% of the region's retail stores. We are blessed with very low vacancy. Landlords would find that a blessing, me not so much because I need properties to attract retailers too. So we only have about 190,000 square feet of vacancy and of that, most are in small spaces in poor performing centers and we only have one large floor plate and that's the former Sports Chalet site, which is about 42,000 feet. And that has, that site itself has a lot of challenges. So we don't have a lot of space. We have conventional shopping centers that limit our attraction capabilities. I don't mean that in any kind of a disparaging way to any of our developers, but it's a fact. So that's our competitive position, a little bit more on that. We have what's called retail leakage, which means more people in the primary trade area are spending their retail dollars outside of the primary trade area than in it. That's a double edged sword. It's a problem on the one hand because it costs us money as a city. What was I gonna say? I just completely lost my train of thought on why that's a double edged sword. Oh, but it's also a void that can be filled with additional retail in Elk Grove. Last year, we had about $166 million in lost sales just within the city limits, so now that's a subset of the primary trade area. That cost us roughly $1.6 million in income, money that goes to fund core city services. And just to fill that void, only within the city of Elk Grove, we need to construct about 700,000 square feet of additional retail space and it has to be in specific categories where we're leaking. So the graph on the left is the primary categories where we're leaking within the primary trade area and those are very analogous to the categories that we're leaking in the city. We have very limited neighborhood retail districts and these are the kinds of districts that boutique and unique, boutique and unique retail want to locate in. We really have two, we have the rural area and we have Old Town. I don't think the rural area is primed for additional retail, there are a lot of barriers there. I think it could be in the future, particularly if the connector becomes successful. Those residents may not like that, but it's probably a fact. Old Town is really what we think of as our neighborhood retail district. It is underperforming. Again, not disparaging any particular business or property owner, there are great businesses down there, but as a whole, Old Town is greatly underperforming. Old Town represents 1.8 million square feet of retail space, so that's equivalent to the mall in acreage and it's equivalent to three malls in retail square footage available, yet it accounts, so that's about 30, that would be about 36% of the city's total retail space. They're only generating less than 2% of sales tax for the city. There's a lot of issues down there, there's a lot of strengths too, and we'll talk about that, but you've got older buildings, multiple owners, limited investment appetite, there's no coordinated cohesive merchandising plan, no marketing plan, but there have been some recent successes, including Brick House and Lola's and the School of Rock and a few others. Outside of factors that we can't control greatly influence the success of retail in Elk Grove and that's, you know, that's true of anywhere. But we have significant retail that is located just outside the city limits, so think Calvine and 99, think now Delta Shores, which just opened. We also have lifestyle centers and enclosed regional shopping malls in other cities that our residents can get to, that offer experiences that our retail doesn't offer, so our residents are going to shop there. Again, can't control what's built in other cities, but it does draw shoppers and sales tax dollars away. Online retail is a hot topic. It continues to steal market share, but I want to stress this, it is still minor when compared to brick and mortar shopping. It's getting a lot of media attention, as it should, but brick and mortar still accounts for 91.5% of retail sales. So some may question, why are we focused on brick and mortar retail when the future is online shopping? It may or may not be, but right now, the present is still brick and mortar. So we really need to be focused on both. The good news, we are a growing city and we are in an up and coming region. So growth is good for retail, we have strong consumer demographics. So the market, the, or the retail recruitment plan that is attached to this staff report, which I encourage you all to read, really did an excellent job of demonstrating, we have strong consumer demographics to attract better brands. So we need more retail and we need higher quality retail to diversify our retail base and increase our sales tax and you can't even start that conversation unless you have strong consumer demographics. We have it in the city and even in the larger primary trade area, which gets diluted because we go out into rural areas and we go into South SAC, it's still very strong by any measure. We have steady sales tax growth, we are up 21.2% over the last 13 quarters. A lot of that is auto driven and that's a problem for us. We are by some measures too dependent on automobile sales tax. Part of why we need to be focused on retail is to diversify that sales tax base as a hedge against changes in consumer preferences related to automobiles and to keep up with, you know, technology like driverless cars, less fuel being purchased, et cetera, et cetera. 21.2% over the last 13 quarters is a really good place for us to be. We've got strong revenue to build on, we just need to diversify. Leakage, as I said, is an opportunity as, as well as a drawback. Millennial growth, this is critical, the larger consumer demographic, the largest consumer demographic today is millennials. They are bigger than Gen X, they are bigger than Baby Boomers. They make up about 83 million people nationwide. These are people born between, it depends who you talk to, but 84 and 2004 is a good, a good timeline to use. In Sacra, in the primary trade area, those numbers flatten out a bit. So Gen X, Baby Boomers and millennials are all at about 25%. But millennials matter here, as you can see, these are garden variety millennials, they are not necessarily in Elk Grove, but they're all staring down at their tablets and they do a lot of shopping that way. Millennials matter because over time, Elk Grove's population is becoming, it, it will probably only take a couple of years for millennials to be the majority in our city. We are attracting millennials like flies, mostly because of our value proposition as a quality of life play and because millennials are getting older and they want to have kids. And so we need retail that appeals to millennial tastes more than anything. That is the kind of city we are becoming. So, and our, our market is not fully formed or tapped, so there's a lot of opportunity in it, there's a lot of voids and gaps that we can fill. So let's get into the strategy. We divided, we condensed our retail offerings down to six key zones, you can see them here. All of them are important, some are stronger than others, you know, right now, zone two, the Laguna Bond and 99 area is by far our strongest retail environment. Where we have opportunity is primarily in retail zones, pardon me, I went the wrong way, two, three, four and five. So Laguna Bond still has some infill development that needs to happen, I think Laguna Gateway Phase Three and some of those things. The Elk Grove Boulevard corridor is where we have the most retail zoned land and for the biggest opportunity for new construction outside of the regional shopping mall, which is zone five down on the bottom. And then zone four is Old Town, where we have a lot of capacity for unique and boutique retail. So the strategy, now that we understand the zones and where we want to focus our efforts, zones two, three, four and five, this is the overall strategy for everywhere. It's active in all zones and we do this now. We want to work with landlords, brokers and tenants to support and maintain existing quality tenants. We want to identify and recruit new to market concepts so we can fill key vacancies. We want to work with property owners in older aging centers to refresh and reinvest in those centers. You know, we want to facilitate change in underperforming areas and centers. Change may be improving those shopping centers, change may be giving up on those shopping centers. We have some underperforming shopping centers that may never be good because they're not in good locations and they weren't designed right. In some instances, we may want to look at different uses there. And, you know, on a very limited, targeted, judicious basis, we want to continue to incentivize retailers that have large community benefit and economic impact. You, you all know that we have sales tax deals on both Costco and the outlet mall and I wouldn't want us doing that everywhere, but where we can really make a strong business case and those larger format retailers can have significant improvements to our sales tax base, I think we should continue to consider that. Further on with the strategy, new construction, so this is a primary focus. If we want to attract higher end lifestyle brands that appeal to millennials and Gen Xers and Baby Boomers, we need a different kind of shopping center. The old conventional, you know, grocery store or hardware store anchored big box power center is probably not where we're gonna achieve a lot of success, especially because a lot of that surrounds us. What we need to look for are gaps in the market and the gap right now, the differentiating factor is that South County lacks a more, what somebody recently called a retail attainment concept or an experiential retail environment. Think Palladio, think the fountains. There are other examples, I've listed some of them here in pictures. These were identified by the retail consultant in the attached retail recruitment plan as communities, like it or not, that have very similar primary trade area demographics, but do much better in retail than us. And there's a slide in the plan that I think really illustrates that very well. And these are the kinds of centers that are the centerpieces of their retail environment and they look very different than what we have in Elk Grove. So we need to facilitate higher quality centers to attract higher end brands. We can do that primarily in zones three, four and five. We need to develop those infill sites in all the zones. Particularly, we need to continue to our efforts to induce the Howard Hughes Corporation to get off the dime and build the Elk Grove collection. I think we're all tired of waiting for that and I think we all feel like there have been a lot of broken promises to this community, not just by them, but by their predecessors. And it either needs to happen or not happen. I'm not here tonight to tell you it's gonna happen. I'm optimistic, you know, you pay me to be optimistic, so I have to be in order to do my job and work with them. But I can't, nobody here can guarantee that that's gonna move forward this year and I'm not here to do that. We need to build Costco in the Ridge. This we can do, we can do this immediately. Costco is under construction after a 10-year plight of this city to attract them. They pulled their building permits on December 29th and, you know, they're out there staking out the site, putting up their silt fences and that'll be coming out of the ground sooner than later. We think they'll be open this summer and the Ridge, I think, will follow shortly after that because Costco has created a ripple in the marketplace. There's a lot of wait and see retailers on the fence about Elk Grove. Costco sends a strong signal that we are a bona fide retail market now. Before Costco, we weren't, we just weren't. One of the things that we wanted to talk about tonight is pursuing a lifestyle shopping center, so again, think the fountains, think Palladio, those are the best local examples on the city-owned 20 acre land just north of the civic center and we'll talk about that in a minute. There are, the good news is, on the new construction front, there are roughly 1.8 million square feet of retail development projects in the pipe. So here's where they are, everything in burnt orange, I think that's burnt orange, let's just call it orange. Everything in orange is built and those are all the centers in the city over 80,000 square feet. Again, look at the brands. Good, solid value and commodity brands, but there's a lot of lifestyle retail that's missing. And I'll show you some brands of what I mean by lifestyle. And then down below in the green, I don't know if this is coming across very clear, but those are the centers that are planned. Some of these are imminent, like I said, under construction now. Some of these, like the mall, are half-built and we don't know when they're gonna start again. Some of them, like the promenade, are probably years away, but it's all in the pipe. That's good, that's better than having nothing in the pipe. The strategy for Old Town, this is critical, we want to remake Old Town, that's zone four in the retail recruitment plan, as a boutique retail dining and entertainment district. It has elements of that now, but it doesn't have enough. Right now, we have too many of some kinds of businesses, not enough of others. So we've got to work on that. One of the ways that I'm recommending in our strategy that we work on that is that we, in a very targeted way, acquire property that we think can be developed and then either develop it ourselves or partner with developers to do it. We're doing that right now. This council authorized us to acquire property on Railroad Street just south of the plaza in October. We went ahead and completed that acquisition. We are now partnering with a developer who is very well-known and does a lot of good work throughout the region, especially on historic rehab projects, to bring a project in front of you hopefully later this, first half of this year. We need to complete the Old Town Plaza project, we need to complete the infrastructure projects, all of this is ongoing. I think most importantly, we need to organize merchants and property owners in Old Town and we need to create a marketing and management district that can present a unified merchandising plan. Further on with the strategy, direct recruitment. Most cities don't do this, we're doing it. We're doing it now because so much development is primed and in the pipe, but we want to make sure that the city is at the table in terms of talking to tenants and brokers about what kind of businesses fill that space. So that's why we hired Retail Strategies, their contract is up in April, we'll have to make a decision about whether to renew with them or bring in somebody else, but we need representation. I can't be everywhere all the time and there are conferences and trade shows nationwide happening every weekend and we've got to be at a lot of them to tell our story. We need to develop and maintain a focused properties report, a retail target list and a retail recruitment plan, all of that has been done, we'll get into that in just a second. So further with the strategy, we have now developed a retail, retail target list. I'm not here to make that public tonight, that would not be in the residents' interests to sort of tip our hand with our competitors about specifically what retailers were going after. That may bother some people, but it's the right thing to do from a business standpoint. What we've developed is a list of target retailers in four key categories that the demographics tell us we can be successful in. And those are restaurants, those are specialty grocers, apparel and sporting goods and recreation. These are all categories that are growing nationwide, these are not categories that are retracting nationwide. We've developed a prospect list of 30 restaurants, more than 30, more than five specialty grocers, 20-plus apparel retailers and four-plus sporting goods and recreation prospects and then a number of lifestyle brands. All of these brands would represent an increase in brand quality for Elk Grove. These are representative brands so that the public understands what we're talking about, but again, this, this is not necessarily the actual recruitment list, although I although I can tell you some of these brands are on the recruitment list. So, this represents elevated polished casual, first-service diners, new-to-market fast casual, and then, local and regional brands that I think we can attract to Old Town if we do our job right. We're already in some conversations with several of the brands on that list right now. These are representative apparel brands on the left, representative grocery brands on the right. Certainly, Whole Foods and Market Five-One-Five are what you would call specialty. Aldi and the other one, which I'm terribly familiar with, you know, you can debate that. But grocery is a growing segment, and whether it's specialty or standard grocery, we can support additional grocers. This is probably where it gets most interesting for people. These are the lifestyle brands that go in the lifestyle shopping centers. So, a lot of these are big millennial brands, a lot of these are highly-curated, small-store brands, where you're encouraged to kind of hang out, maybe not even buy anything. Maybe you go and buy it online later, maybe they drive the sale in the store. And then, on the right are the, just representative sports and recreation brands. You probably know most of these. So, that's the strategy in a very short timeline. You know, again, there's a lot of research and data backing up that that is the right strategy. We're already starting to implement some of that. Our consultant is representing us at twenty-plus. In fact, I feel like I may have glossed over that slide, I'm sorry. No, I didn't. Okay, so our consultant is representing us at over twenty retail events now. I go to some of the local and regional ones, I go to Monterey, I go to LA, and I go to Las Vegas. They'll handle the rest. What they're doing is they're taking these demographics and this recruitment package, and they're putting that in front of retailers and brokers and developers at these nationwide conferences, and they are telling our story. They're generating a list of leads for us, some of which we're already in discussions with some of these brands that you see here. Then, what they do is, when those turn into prospects, and when we have the types of properties that they want to go into, we do the handoff, right? From our consultant and from staff to a developer we trust, who's building a product that they want to be in. And then, that becomes a locate. A retail locate is a thirty-six-month process from conversation to results. So, these things don't happen quick. Nothing in economic development happens particularly quick, but you have to stay at it. We have to stay at it. So, now, I want to close with just getting into some key projects and giving you and the public an update on some of the stuff that you're probably thinking about. One is, of course, our, you know, perpetually our top retail priority, and probably our top economic development priority, is coming to a resolution on the Howard Hughes Corporation's Outlet Mall property, which they now call the Elk Grove Collection. I try to strike the right tone between being a bull and a bear on this, because it changes all the time. But right now, I'm optimistic, and here's why. Because with the casino approvals, and that project hopefully coming to market sooner than any of us might have thought. And I'm, I have my economic development cap on, I'm not passing judgment on gambling or the casino or whether the residents think it's a good thing or a bad thing. I'm telling you, from an economic development standpoint, it has made already a significant impact on the leasing activity at the Elk Grove Collection. I think they're closer than they've ever been, and I am, again, optimistic and hopeful, but again, I can't stand up here and tell you that that's going to happen. What's unique about this mall, it's unlike really any mall in the country, and I don't think this story is getting told enough. It started out as an off-brand discount outlet mall. It has evolved over the last couple of years into a hybrid specialty lifestyle center that combines the best of off-brand factory stores with full-price stores, and it includes elevated polished casual dining. So, Livermore gets a lot of play, right? Livermore is the gold standard in Northern California of outlet malls. But if you go to Livermore, it's nice and it's been expanded. But it's a standard racetrack design with all off-brand stores and no dining. There's a food court, and that's about it. This is very different than that. And now, we've layered on this gaming resort project that is six-hundred. So, now, you've got a one-point-one-million-square-foot project that is designed to work on a single site, although in separate ownership. And you walk out of the casino, and you're in this great shopping environment. If you come for the shopping environment, you stay for the casino. So, it's a really unique situation that can be created here. And if it hits, it's going to be huge for us, it's going to be huge for the region. Here are some of the latest architects' renderings. That's the restaurant, that's one of the restaurant spaces in the center. On the right is the marketplace, which is the version of a food court, but I've seen the plans and the tenant list for the food court, and it is elevated. It's one of the better, it's a food hall, it's not a food court. This is some of the in-line retail mixed in with the food. This project has a ton of potential. Moving on, we talked about the gaming resort a little bit. Here's, this is actually a view from the mall looking into the gaming resort, AKA the casino, and so, you can see the sort of seamless nature of this. There's no other place in California that I'm aware of that will offer this. I mean, this is incredibly unique. There's one down in the inland empire where you've got a casino next to a mall, but they're not designed to go together. Maybe somebody knows of another one. This is, this is a view from, I think, Highway ninety-nine, looking west of the main hotel lobby. So, that's going to be twelve floors with three hundred rooms, and there you see the lobby. So, moving on from the casino, the other key project that's in the pipe is Costco. As I said, this is under construction now. What you see, I'll use this pointer. So, here's Costco, if you follow the mouse. And then, what wraps around it in this L shape is the Ridge. So, Costco is happening. Costco is going to generate, hopefully in its first year, eight-hundred-thousand-plus dollars in sales tax revenue. As you know, we did a sales tax share with them, so we'll keep half of that, half of that. We'll go to Costco to make the project work. You know, any way you look at it, we're making money on Costco. I think it will help to recapture whatever sales tax dollars we might lose from Delta Shores, and we'll probably lose a little. But I think as Delta Shore stabilizes and our residents understand that they're now getting more choices in Elk Grove, I'm hopeful that they will make the choice to stay in Elk Grove and shop. So, that was the, this is the Ridge, that's the site plan. Costco's here, and again, here's the L, and these are some of the renderings. It's, the design is better than some of what's already in Elk Grove, but it's pretty conventional. But what we're hearing from the developer there, who is Pappas Investments, is that because Costco is real now, again, a lot of the wait-and-see retailers who've been looking at Elk Grove but haven't made the commitment are now calling. So, that's a good sign. This is the Railroad Street redevelopment in Old Town that we talked about. So, what you see in red there, the city owns. What you see in yellow, we also own, but we just acquired. So, we basically own the entire street now. There's a little bit to the south of us that we don't own and that we're looking at as a possible acquisition target. You know that your plaza plans are up here, and the Plaza Phase Two and Three would take up some of this section south of Grove Street. What we're envisioning now is coming up with a development plan that would take everything south of Grove Street, include the plaza elements, add the parking that the area needs, and then develop the two yellow properties we just acquired. We would convert the red brick building that's there now, that's about five-thousand square feet, is a historic structure. We retain that, do a historic rehab of it, and convert it into a restaurant space with outdoor patio. And then, the area in between here, this is a very preliminary drawing, but here you see the new restaurant, the conversion of the brick building. And then, this is another existing building that we don't own, but that we're working with our development partners to potentially acquire. They, hopefully, they would do the acquisition. And in between that, we would fill that in with this row here of small-shop space, which could hold coffee, restaurants, bars, dry cleaning, you name it. And we're actually looking at the feasibility of doing a number of multifamily residential units on this site, which would be a very urban product, that would be a game-changer, I think, for Old Town. So, that's what we're doing with Railroad Street. On the top, you can see the existing property. On the bottom, you can see a very early concept drawing of how that may turn into a restaurant. It gets a new storefront and a nice articulated awning, some landscaping, and then, this is kind of the money shot. You've got this great outside patio seating area that would be adjacent to some parking and our plaza project. And you can kind of see, you go to the plaza on Sunday morning for the farmer's market, and you're done with that, and you come over here for brunch, and you have a drink, and then, maybe there's jazz in the evening, and, I mean, it really could be fantastic. And that's our, that's our thinking and our plan on that. Moving on, key projects. So, the city owns property that is commercially zoned just across the street and north of our aquatic center and our civic center, which I now label with lowercase c and lowercase c and civic and center, because we're going to name it later, hopefully. But, so, in this artist, architect's three-D rendering here on the bottom, you can see across, you can see a portion of that twenty-acre site. This is prime land for retail. Certainly, it's up to the council what we dedicate that land to, but in that, we own it. In that, there are other privately-owned lands adjacent to it that are also vacant. We have a really unique opportunity to partner with a developer. The adjacent property owners are the Pappas Company, Pappas Investments. Partner with them potentially, take our twenty acres, add their fifteen to twenty. Now, you've got a forty-acre site, and that's big enough to do one of these high-end outdoor lifestyle shopping centers, and it's right in the heart of the city, and it monetizes a portion of Civic Center, which is going to be sorely needed, because when all those families and parents are bringing their kids to swim events and to weddings and bar mitzvahs and who-knows-what at the community center, and going to that park, they're going to want, they're going to be in town, they may stay overnight. That drives hotel tax revenue, this captures their sales tax revenue. And we give it to them right there, they walk across the street, and they're in this fantastic retail environment, and it's seamless with our Civic Center. This is a major opportunity. We're looking at the feasibility of doing something like that. This is probably the first time it's been talked about publicly in any kind of official capacity, and we will hope to bring something to the council to consider in the first half of twenty-eighteen. It may take a little longer. We may find that it's not fiscally feasible to do it, then we wouldn't bring it to you. But I'm optimistic that we're going to put something together for you. And I'm optimistic that the community will respond incredibly favorably to it, because it's just, it's just a product we don't have. And our residents are going to Roseville and Folsom to get it. There's no reason for that. Finally, this is the Brew Space Project. Some of you may have heard about this, but this is the first time I'm really talking about it publicly. So, this concept is that, think, if you're familiar with the Sugar Mill, right across the river in Yolo County, I think, is the county that's in. The Sugar Mill is a common, publicly-accessible lifestyle environment that houses a number of wineries with tasting rooms as well as production facilities. So, you can, you can lease your grapes, truck them in, you can crush them on-site, you can ferment them on-site, you can move them right into your tasting room and sell at retail. And there's great outdoor experiential place, and there's great interior atrium space. We want to do the same thing in Elk Grove for the region, but we want to do it in beer. We've had some success directly recruiting breweries. We now have four. We've assisted each and every one of them very significantly to bring them here, and more want to come. But now, we're out of space, right? Most of those are going into our industrial spaces. Some of the landlords don't want that, because it creates parking problems, and some of their existing tenants don't want a brewery operation. I mean, we're really out of space. If Rachel Brown was here, she would tell you, because that's, her focus is on breweries and wineries. So, what we want to do, and this was her idea, and I'll give her all the credit, and it's a brilliant idea, is we want to create a sugar mill for beer and put it in Elk Grove. And so, this is an early rendering of what that would look like, and it's pretty cool, I think. It's got kind of a pastoral agrarian feel to it. I see a silo on the right, I think that's fabricated, maybe we can call it the Silo, we don't know yet. But on the, the final slide in my presentation, I think it's the final, yep, and then I'll be quiet. This is kind of an interior cutout of what this would look like. So, you see, you've got a shared brew house in this back corner. We don't have a site for this yet, but we're looking at some sites, and we're talking to a specific developer. Back here in this back corner, you've got a shared brew house. So, this is where very micro and nano brewers, which is what our region is producing, can come in, use common equipment, brew. If you're a larger brewer and you need some specific space, you can brew in these areas. These are taprooms for people who maybe don't brew on-site. Maybe they're a brewery from down in San Diego, but they want to activate our market. So, they don't have to come up here and brew, they can come up here and just pour. And then, this is great interior space, and then, we're talking with a specific midtown regional restaurant that I think we would fall all over ourselves to have in this town, who might want to go into this restaurant space. So, hopefully, I've provided a somewhat coherent update on the retail sector, what our current strategy is and how we're implementing that, and then, what some of the key projects and opportunity sites are for us. And that concludes my presentation.
Excellent. Got a question here, sir.
Answer any questions.
So, you had, if I'm not mistaken, you had a hundred-and-sixty-six million is what your estimated leakage is?
Well, that's the net. We're actually leaking about two-point-three million, but we net that against gains in a few key categories, and so, the net loss is a hundred-and-sixty-six. The problem is two-point-three million.
Because I thought there was a report that we had about ten years ago that had seven-hundred-and-fifty million was our leakage.
I saw that too. I don't know how that was generated, that wasn't under my watch. I'm not saying it's wrong, but I think what maybe that is, is that was their version of a primary trade area, because when you look at the leakage inside our primary trade area, which is much larger, it's nearly double Elk Grove's land mass, then the number gets a lot bigger. That's, the hundred-and-sixty-six million is just the city's problem, just within our city limits.
Just the residents of Elk Grove what has lost?
Yes, that's correct.
It seems, I mean, it just seems low, because if you think just the Costco we have going in is low estimated two-million, two-hundred-million a year. It seems like for the entire city, it seems.
It might be, I can go back and look at those numbers.
That's all right, I just was asking where it came up.
That may be right. I mean, we get our retail leakage information directly from a company called HDL, who's been monitoring our sales tax for, I don't know, a decade, long time. There's a lot of different data sources out there for leakage. It's not an exact science in any way, shape, or form.
Well, the only reason I was bringing it up is if I was a retailer looking to come into the area, it's a big difference between a hundred-and-sixty-six million being lost and seven-hundred-and-fifty million lost.
No, you make a really good point, so we'll sharpen our pencil on that and see if maybe we're off a little bit. If we're off, it just means the problem's worse, so that's not the worst thing in the world. What we really focused on was that primary trade area, because keep in mind, retailers do not care about what our city limits are, right? They care about how far people are willing to commute to shop at their store. They care about who's already in this market and what kind of a gap they can fill. If you look at the primary trade area, the numbers in the retail recruitment plan are showing much larger numbers. And that's what those tenants are going to be, you know, that's what's going to draw them here.
Very good report, though. Very good report, very detailed, thank you.
But I will, I'll go back and look at those numbers. We'll talk to HDL, I may have transposed a zero, but if anything, it's worse, not better.
Yeah, I would echo that. The, well, first of all, I want to echo the compliments that Councilman Detrick mentioned. I really liked this report, there's a lot more detail we could dive into, and we did do that a little bit earlier. But to his point about, I think it was C.B. Richard Ellis that had.
It was.
At a billion, as I saw, I think it was two thousand and fifteen, I want to say, maybe, no, maybe, anyway. It's online, you can find it. But what I wanted to talk about was, could you pull up that slide again for the trade area that showed the polygon trade area? So.
Sorry, this is not terribly legible, maybe.
So, as I recall, you know, this is, and it was using some specific stores in mind, right? Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, Target, et cetera, Walmart, I think. But what I'm curious about, and I don't know if you guys had it ready yet, but I want to look at where, if our residents are going to Roseville or Folsom to some, whether it's Nordstrom's or whatever, I'm looking to demonstrate to these retailers, those retailers, how much demand we have. So, the reverse polygon of that, do you have that?
I have something approximating that, Councilman. We have asked the consultants, my boss, our city manager, Laura Gill, asked for the same thing smartly, and so, we have asked, we've asked Retail Strategies to put that together. So, this is a heat, this is what we were just looking at. This is a heat map of where shoppers are originating their trip from to come shop at three key stores, Target, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, and Walmart. And so, this kind of shows, what this shows you, that within the trade area, most of the shopping is taking place within the trade area, and we're not attracting hardly anybody into it. The next slide, I'm hoping, you know, I thought I had that, I apologize. I thought I had a slide in here that shows the, oh, you know what I do, I'm in the wrong place. Give me a second, apologize.
That's okay.
So, this is market supply. This is the amount of annual consumer spending captured by businesses located in the trade area and the green areas. So, this is where people from, and the reverse of that is here, this is market demand. So, this represents the amount of, the amount spent by consumers located within the trade area outside of the trade area. So, this is almost a reverse heat map of what we just saw. It's not quite what you're asking for.
It just doesn't specify.
But even this tells a stark story. I mean, if you look how much of our trade area dollars are being captured by retailers within the region, we start to get at that.
That types, that gets to what Councilman Detrick was referring to. Now, you have five-and-a-half billion here, five-point-six billion.
Yeah, I'm beginning to think I'm missing a zero, which is embarrassing. Yeah, I'm beginning to think I'm missing a zero, which is embarrassing.
Yeah, I think it's a billion, but anyway, and.
I will, you know, I will go back and check that and I think you might be right, it might be a billion six instead of 166 million. If that's the case, I apologize, that's embarrassing, I'll correct that record.
Well, that's okay, I, well, I'm, and I'm, I'm more focused too on the, the targeting of, of certain retailers, being able to demonstrate the, the demand that comes out of this city because I, I think there's a lot of us that know, there's, there's a lot of shopping done at, at these other.
These brands that we were looking at.
Luxury stores, yeah, I mean, yeah, it's, I think there's clear demonstration and that would also be consistent with the CB Richard Ellis report that had.
It would be.
An index score and it, and it was literally double, I mean, if it was, the index was 100 that showed demand for, let's say, a Neiman Marcus, our index was 250 or something like that, I mean, it was.
Right, when you take this analysis, Councilman, Mr. Vice Mayor, I apologize, and you layer it onto the CB Richard Ellis, you get a real clear picture. The CB Richard Ellis report was scientific, I mean, it was super detailed, to the point where you couldn't put it in front of a retailer and have a conversation.
Yeah.
But the data's there and then you use this much more user-friendly report and put that in front of a retailer and it's like, we're not just telling you we have good demographics, we're telling you specifically which stores will be successful in Elk Grove.
Right.
No other city's doing it that way than I know of.
No, this is good, this is really good. And lastly, I'll just say that, just to contradict you a little bit, which is, I, I think the outlets is, is a, is a priority, but it's one that we have very, very little control over.
That's correct.
So I would, my personal opinion is the 20 acres that we own, the conversations that we've been having, I, I would really say that, that should be our number one priority in terms of something we can control and push forward and the demand that you articulated earlier, I completely agree with. Giving, giving families and, and folks that come to visit that center that are, whether it's swimming meets and, and are just swimming leisurely from within the city, a place to go in between heats, you know, swimming heats and those kinds of things, so.
Well, if your colleagues feel similarly, we'd love to make that our top retail priority.
Yeah, thank you.
I do. I support that.
Thank you.
If that was a question.
Just throwing it out there.
Yeah. Quick question, is there any more research on the leakage and exactly what are they leaving the city to go to? Anything?
That's what the Vice Mayor is asking for and that's what we're putting together. So, the, the trade area data that I showed you and where people are coming from and going to before they, and after they shop at our stores, that's all, the majority of that is generated by, believe it or not, mobile phone data. Most of us have agreed to let Apple and Google track us and so what I've asked the consultant for is to reverse that so that we know what shopping trips outside of the area are originating in Elk Grove and then because it's mobile phone data, in an aggregated, non-identifiable way, we know where those, those groups of, of residents presumably are going to shop and that'll tell us how many of our residents are spending their money at the Galleria and at IKEA and at the fountains and at the Paladio and Arden Fair and, and those, I mean, those are the big ones, but.
Right, because, I mean, logically it would, it would make sense once we get more intel on that, we could target specifically.
Yeah, once, once I have that, I'll get it to all of you. We're gonna post the retail recruitment plan on our website after I double check some of those figures, we'll add that slide to it, this is all accessible.
I don't, I don't think you have to be very scientific to figure out, we have everything middle down and nothing middle up, so if you want middle up, you're shopping somewhere else.
I think that's correct, anecdotally speaking.
Yeah, you know, many constituents have shared that with me, that they're looking for middle up, you know.
Yeah, that's probably the biggest, you know, when I get into conversations with residents about economic development, most residents think of economic development as where they shop, so I hear that a lot. Bring us better brands. We want better brands, we need better shopping centers.
Great presentation. I know that you and I, we talked about a lot of these key areas and I'm glad it's in a form in which we can actually see it, so. Questions? Directions?
Well, it said direction is appropriate, so I, I heard one council member agree with our, our priority on those 20 acres. The rest of you agree?
I support it, yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman.
All right, want to open public comment, seeing that there are no one signed up to speak, want to close public comment and we've already deliberated, so, next item.
Take us on to item 10.2, which is to consider actions relating to the iconic art piece at Civic Center, which includes rescinding the initial award, looking at reducing the number of exterior pieces, combining those for the total cost up to 250,000 for the iconic art piece and then releasing a request for proposals, if that's the direction. I'll hand it over to Nathan.
Thank you, Jason. Good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Suen, members of the council. Nathan Bagwell, I serve as a senior analyst in the city manager's office. The item for your consideration, as Jason mentioned, is the Civic Center and specifically the iconic art piece. Staff's recommendation related to this is that council go ahead and rescind approval to enter into a contract with Gordon Huether Studio for the iconic art at the Civic Center to combine the budgets allocated for the kinetic wind and iconic art pieces, which I'll show you a map later and specifically identify what exactly I'm talking about. That would make a total combined budget allocation of 250,000. This would also reduce the number of commissioned exterior art pieces by one for a total of, actually exterior art pieces will be, that's a typo, there's actually going to be five. There will be seven at the site, five outside. And to direct staff to issue a new request for qualifications for the iconic art piece reflecting this revised budget. You might notice that it says qualifications instead of proposal, very similar processes, but someone we're talking to right now, we're very close to hiring on as a contract manager, is the former executive director from the Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission and she is, is helping us with regards to how we would go about this process in the future to help us get some, some better results. Quick background on this, last October, you approved Civic Center artwork as selected by the Civic Center Public Art Review Committee and authorized the city manager to execute contracts with the selected artists. About a week later, staff received an email from Gordon Huether Studio informing staff of their intention to reduce the overall size of the structure from 24 feet in height and 12 feet in width down to 20 feet tall and 10 feet wide. This represents a 30% reduction in total scale of the artwork. Staff believes the reduction of four feet in height and two feet in width to be a significant In January, staff met with the, it's called a special meeting for the Elk Grove Arts Commission to consider the changes proposed for the iconic art piece. The commission agreed with staff and SMAC's assessment, I should mention that we also met with, with SMAC in December as this was all formulating, we were having these conversations with the artists. SMAC agreed with the city's assessment that the reduction was significant as far as deviating from the original proposal. The Art Commission also considered combining the budget allocations for the kinetic and iconic art pieces, kinetic being 50, iconic being 200 respectively. The commission voted unanimously 5-0 to recommend council to combine the budgets for a total of 250,000 and go back out to RFQ. So what does that mean going back out to RFQ? One of the stated goals has been to have this iconic art piece, all the exterior art pieces in place prior to the opening of the aquatics complex. This will delay that and so we want to make sure that we're letting you know that, that was actually considered by the commission as something to, to factor in and they felt that that delay did not deter them from going back out to RFQ, recommending to go back out to RFQ. Staff believes that going back out will yield additional proposals that council may wish to consider. Gordon Huether Studio is of course welcome and encouraged to resubmit their original proposal for the higher budget allocation or any new proposal that they would like to put forward. So this graphic right here breaks down what specifically we're talking about doing. Exterior C and exterior D represent the iconic art piece, that's exterior C, exterior D was the kinetic art piece. You may recall that exterior D, we did not get a selection, recommendation to council, we were going back out to RFP on that anyways. So what this is proposing to do is combine both of these to location number three, exterior C, and this would have the combined 250,000 budget. So at the artist's requests, speaking to Gordon Huether Studio, they did ask that I include a visual of the difference between the proposed, the originally proposed and the new dimensions of the project. So this is a visual of, of someone standing next to the art, as you can see, and is just meant to give you kind of a, an idea of the production and scale. But alternatively, if council should like, should wish to do so, you could direct staff to execute the contract with Gordon Huether Studio with the proposed reduction in size, just say, okay, we're fine with it. You could also direct staff to see if the new 250,000 budget, if you're fine combining those two, would accommodate the originally proposed artwork, also an option. However, staff does not recommend either alternatives as the revised proposal we feel is a significant departure. Our commission feels this way, SMAC feels this way as well. We believe that going back out for 250,000 may yield proposals that you would like to consider, one of which could be the same artist coming back and, and is encouraged to apply as well. So just to recap the recommended actions, staff is recommending that council adopt a resolution to rescind approval to enter into contract with Gordon Huether Studio for the iconic art at Civic Center, combine the budgets allocated for the kinetic wind iconic art pieces for a total combined budget allocation of 250,000. Again, this will reduce the number of commissioned exterior pieces by one, apologies again, it will be five exterior and two interior. And to direct staff to issue a new request for qualifications for the iconic art piece reflecting the revised budget. I'll be happy to address any questions you might have.
Questions? Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Nathan. So, I'm curious why we think, I mean, 200,000 is a big budget, so why do we think we're gonna get something, I mean, what I read in here is the current budget may not be sufficient to attract quality art the city desires. What makes us believe that, you know, 50,000 more is gonna be that much of a difference?
Well, I, I think that comment might have been in relation to the kinetic art piece, specifically 50,000. That was one of the sort of hindsight wishes that the commission relayed to me, that it would have been nice if we had a higher budget for the kinetic as we found that, that we weren't quite where we want it to be as far as scale and size. So their thought being, if we combine the two, it could be a kinetic piece, it could be very similar to the piece we've had before, but, and also talking to the individual that we're very close to having under contract, she feels that 250,000 will get us some, some pretty great big proposals and so she supported that decision for that reason.
And, and did, anytime did Gordon entertain delivering what he had agreed to for that, you know, for, well, for that price? I mean, it was, we agreed upon, he knew what the bid was, right? And so he, he had the, the size and everything was worked out.
I believe he never signed the contract and when the contract came, he said, I can't do it that firm now and I can reduce it by 30% or increase it to 250.
Yeah, okay.
You're, you're very close, the 250 really didn't come into play until our, our commission actually said, oh, well, why don't we try this and see if we can really hit a home run with a bigger piece? But yes, the, the pushback was to the vendor, the artist and said, you know, you gave us this proposal, you came before our council, the anticipation is that you're going to go forward in honor of that proposal and their response was just that the prices had changed and they were no longer able to do so. So, I let them know, okay, this is a significant change and we need our council to sign off on this. And we also were diligent about talking to our partners, SMAC and our Art Commission, who are very passionate about this and wanted to come before you with this message and let you know that, you know, this is how our, our, Art Commission feels about this and that's why we made this recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Nope. All right. Thank you, sir. At this point, I want to open for public comment, I have a few individuals signed up. Darcy Tunt, calling Darcy is Liz Iron.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, community, those who are left, thank you. My name is Darcy Tunt, I am the director of Gordon Huether Studio and I'm Gordon's partner as well, I'm here representing Gordon, he's actually in Clemson, Ohio for their university football project, so he's unable to be here. I would like to add some comments and some information that I think is gonna be very helpful to your decision in addition to the staff report. As you know, on October 25th, 2017, council did vote to approve the sculpture by Gordon and our team for the comments area and, which was awarded as a response to the RFP, not an RFQ and we'll come back to those differences because they really are very, very different and now it seems that staff has realized the difference of issuing an RFP versus an RFQ, but we'll come back to that. So we responded to an RFP, which is a request for a proposal and at that time in June, the dimensions were 24 by 12. Shortly after council approval, we revisited the preliminary job costing that had been done since it had already been several months since the original proposal was presented and it was at that time that we learned through some of our preliminary research and going back doing our, you know, preliminary design development, mind you, we weren't in a contract to go through that process yet, but we were doing some preliminary research just as our own due diligence to ensure that we could still meet this now that we had official city approval, yet no contract. So, it was through that and at that time that we realized that in order to maintain the 200,000 budget, we were gonna have to try to finagle something with the scale or the scope or the size. So, at this point, we were recommending the 20 by 10 feet and we were not simply deciding to just change this, this wasn't at a whim or just because we decided to go against what we originally proposed, that's not it at all. And this was pointed out and discussed in numerous email correspondence with the city as we were working through many other details of the scope of the development, of the scope of the site, we were talking to them about maybe having a fountain, maybe adding a plinth, lowering a plinth, there were numerous things on the table for discussion. So it was by no means a done deal. That's the way we look at it, though we do take our proposals very seriously, which is why we went back to the drawing board to make sure we could do this before we got into the contract. So again, we were at a point where we were very much in discussion still about the scope, the scale, the site and the application. Given that all of these changes were still in discussion, it seemed appropriate to us then, obviously, to talk about what we could do for that budget and that's when all of those discussions were happening. So, we certainly apologize that we weren't able to have that information at the October 25th meeting when it was given to council. And it seems that that would have been able to avoid a lot of extra time and confusion and quite frankly, a lot of unnecessary negativity that has been a result of what we believe is a minor change in scale. Please know that this was not a bait and switch situation by any means. Gordon has been a professional artist for over 30 years, he and our team are nothing but honorable and honest and we operate our business with the utmost integrity at all times, we're consistently recognized in the community and in this profession for being one of the most professional among this peer group. This is truly and simply a situation that evolved naturally and organically as a part of our preliminary design development and our job costing process. It was certainly not intentional and though we recognize how unfortunate this process become, has become and so for that, we do genuinely apologize. Gordon and our team remain very interested and excited to do this project. We are happy to offer a couple other options that have been presented tonight. First, let me just maintain that I know that the Aquatic Center opening and this artwork may not be a critical element, but we remain committed to meet this early summer deadline and we believe we can do it. So, I, it feels to me like it would be a huge waste of everyone's time to waste eight months and start that process all over. You guys already voted for this artist, for this sculpture, so what we would like to do is we can approve, you, council members, Mr. Mayor, could approve the sculpture as it's currently proposed, 20 by 10 for the existing budget. The, the display that I asked Mr. Bagwell to present was a little misleading because the 24 by 12 picture is like this and the 20 by 10 is kind of like this, so that wasn't the intention of offering those visuals, it was really with the scale man so that you can see to a layperson, no one is ever gonna know the difference. Now, I understand, you know, that you may not agree with that, but that is the reality. We also talked about raising the plinth so we can get it up closer, there were lots of things that we discussed of how we could resolve this, mitigate the issue. So the first is to approve it, 20 by 10, the existing budget of 200,000. We've gone back and done some job costing and we believe that for 225,000, we can deliver the original sculpture that was presented at the 24 by 12. You would still have an additional 25,000 in your budget left to fund this fountain or some of the other ideas that were in discussion for scope, so that's certainly an option. And obviously, the last, and I think regretful, would be to start this process all over and go back to, which I'm hearing now, is an RFQ, not an RFP. And not to insult anyone, but does everyone understand the difference of those? And not to insult anyone, but does everyone understand the difference of those? Okay. Because it really is very onerous on an artist to ask him or her for a proposal. And when you're really looking for good quality art, we fortunately have a great team and we can produce really good proposals in these kinds of scenarios, but it really is quite onerous and oftentimes not the best result for the client to go about it that route. It sounds like now they're getting advice that's saying, yes, we should have done an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications to begin with. But nonetheless, you're here, you voted on Gordon as an artist, you voted on his artwork, and I would respectfully request that you allow, keep us at your artist, as your artist, and let us figure something out with you. We haven't signed in a contract yet. We're committed to making this work to your deadline. And I thank you for your time and I would, you know, offer up any questions you might have.
I actually have a question for John Hopps. John, can you elaborate? I mean, typically, don't we use an RFP to get the cost that somebody's willing to perform on?
We do, yeah. And so an RFP, of course, is a proposal, a request for qualifications is just what it says, just determining whether or not the person is qualified to do whatever it is you do. And then you might enter into negotiations to fine tune what the proposal is. So the documents speak in terms of an RFP. One of the proposals from staff is to do an RFQ. One of the things council might consider, depending on where you go on this, is give staff some flexibility to do an RFP and/or an RFQ, depending on what direction staff thinks will get the most advantageous response.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
So, Darcy, thank you for coming here tonight, by the way. The additional cost I wanted to get at, as I recall, this sculpture, the way it was created was the aluminum and it was computer modeled, you put it through, right? So I'm curious what if, because it doesn't appear to be man hours, this is, you're running it through a computer, and so I'm not trying to minimize your efforts, I'm just trying to understand, what is the additional cost besides material perhaps?
Well, aluminum, there is a huge cost in the aluminum itself and costs have gone up. So the combination of those two, there is enormous amount of man hours in the digital design development of getting this to a place before we can even fabricate it. So this is a very, very complex piece of art, and I would venture to say one that no other city is going to have even remotely like it. So it truly is going to be an iconic piece. So it is time, it's labor, it's materials, it's going through that design development process. It really is a very detailed and complex art piece.
Thank you.
Councilman Hill?
Yeah, a couple of questions. First of all, if we were to use an RFQ versus an RFP, then essentially, we're only approving an artist, we're not approving a piece of art. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So I don't know that, I don't know how the Arts Commission feels about that, but I want to see what the final product would be. I don't want to just put my faith in an artist because they've done cool work in the past with a blank check and hope that it comes out as good as I want it to be. I mean, that, so I've got a question on that process, but then also, and I appreciate your point and thank you for being here tonight, and you sat through a long meeting. And hopefully, on one of the other items, you recognized why I called out, when you speak in absolutes about numbers, they tell a different story. And so a 5% on a lot coverage doesn't seem like a big deal, but when that lot is one acre and all of a sudden that becomes 2,000 square feet of building, that's a big deal. So four feet by two feet doesn't seem like a big deal, but when it's 30% of the overall sculpture, that becomes a big deal. And so I'm not saying there was a bait and switch, and I get it how, I'm in construction, I get how material costs fluctuate, but to have a 30% less end product for the same price, you could see how that seems like it's not something we were anticipating. So I certainly don't want to exclude Gordon from the process going forward. I liked his piece of art when I saw it. And I appreciate the, now that we're kind of combining the budgets, although I do have a question, would we now have a requirement that the iconic art piece also have a kinetic element to it?
That's not my understanding, is that we're just, we're
We're just scrapping the kinetic.
No, it can be either. It can be a iconic kinetic piece, it can be some other conceptual idea that I'm not even thinking of, but we're not saying it can't be a kinetic, we're not saying it has to be kinetic.
Okay. It just has to be delivered for this amount of money?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I add a comment to that? So a couple things. So in terms of looking at the percent reduction, if you will, and I absolutely, you know, I'm a pragmatic and factual person, so I completely understand looking at it that way. I will say honestly and truly, that's not really how we look at it. I know that in construction, it's often a per square foot price. Art is unfortunately not like that, as much as I would like it to be as definitive, it's just not. Now, having said that, we never until a few days ago suggested to raise the budget. We didn't know there was an increase in budget. So we never until just a couple days ago went back and tried to crunch some numbers to figure out. So we never said, "Hey, you know all you wanted at that size, you got to pay me 25,000 more." It was not like that. So it was never a discussion of, "Give us more money and we'll deliver what we told you." I mean, it was really, truly, oh my goodness, prices have gone up almost six months, seven months have now passed since that original proposal. Anybody could hopefully reasonably understand that that's a lot of time between making a proposal, if you're, you know, going to build a house, you know, it's a proposal, it's not a fixed contract, you're not contracted at that point. So this was truly not something that was, again, intentional. So, you know, again, we hope that you would consider that, understand where we're coming from, and don't start this process all over. You like the art, you know the artist, and you know that, you know, most likely, we can deliver on what you'd originally voted on.
Typically, there's a timeframe on accepting, when you put in a proposal, it's good for 90 days or whatever.
90 days or something, yeah.
So when you guys put in that proposal, I'm assuming you gave us, based on what was there?
Typically, we do, and I went back and looked at the proposal. We almost have that in every proposal that we submit, and I'm not sure why this one didn't. But even if, even if it was there, I don't think, I mean, I think we'd still be having this discussion because I think everybody would still be upset about it somehow. But yes, typically, we would have that kind of disclaimer, if you will, just to kind of save our bacon or, you know, make us not have this potentially bad situation.
But I think the offering of the $200,000 was within the timeframe of what the proposal that was put out.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to look, so proposal itself to contract, no. I mean, we weren't even in, we haven't even, we weren't even starting negotiating contract until November. So we hadn't, and there were so many other elements of the sculpture that had, were still in discussion. So, you know, you guys approved a design with dimensions that you, you know, were hoping were going to become true. It was after you approved that that we started that dialogue, and a lot of things were at play at that point, not just the sculpture itself.
But if we were going to add something above and beyond, that would be like any other thing, it would be a change order, right? So that would, and I think we talked about it that night with Gordon, that if we added something above and beyond, we would address that because there was the idea of a fountain and the size of the fountain, all those kind of things. That may be a separate contract from, with somebody else, so.
I think all of that was in discussion, though. I mean, I think that's the point, is that there wasn't a finite contract yet decided.
I mean, it just bothers, it just kind of philosophically bothers me, though, to put a bid in and then not accept your bid afterwards when you get, I mean, it was days after the meeting that the contract came to you guys to sign, and that's when you guys didn't sign it, which is, it's unfortunate and really disappointing.
And for that, we are extremely, you know, regretful, for sure. We hope still to be your artist.
We have another speaker to hear from.
Right, we do. My only additional question, this does not exclude this particular, want to say, vendor from putting a proposal in for?
No, they're absolutely welcome and encouraged to submit.
No, we're not putting them on the bad list.
Well, next time it'll be our qualifications, not an actual proposal, so.
All right, thank you.
Well, Darcy, just one last question. So is, are you saying, is that your best offer, the 225 for the original piece?
At this point in time, yes, we believe that we can deliver confidently the original scope, the original scale of 24 by 10 for the, of slightly increased budget of 225.
That included, I think, the pool, the reflection?
Not the fountain itself, but a, some sort of a plinth, yeah, the fountain itself was definitely.
Just to be clear, because numbers matter, I think she means 24 by 12. You said 10, I think you meant 12, though.
Yes.
I know that's an important point.
Thank you. Yes, yeah, indeed. And the other option, of course, is, because again, we didn't know that there was an opportunity for an increased budget until just literally days ago. So we, I would never have come to you proposing that because I usually fix budgets or fixed budget. So it was, hey, we want to still do this, how can we make this work? Can we add a taller plinth? But yes, so that's certainly an option.
Yeah, and just to, because, sorry, I got in the first place and asked some specifics, you, we were talking, in the diagram, it was over a reflection pool? And did I hear you say that, did include that or didn't include?
Does not include the pool. It was at request of staff that we do some renderings to show the pool, just so that you guys could get an idea of the visual if you didn't want to spend some increased budget on the landscape, which I believe there was a portion set aside for.
Yeah, I believe the conversation we had that night was to possibly see if we could tie in with the, the company was doing the aquatic center, whether doing their pool work, part of the design would be to do the fountain.
That would make sense.
There's a separate budget for the reflective pool, that's not included there.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Last speaker is Liz Irons.
Good evening, council members, vice mayor and mayor. As a member of the Arts Commission, for myself, I can say I was very disappointed that we got this increase of 30% difference for something that was previously agreed to. And council member Soon, I sent you an email. Yes, it was nice work, but I want to have something that my descendants can look to and see, oh, we did this, it's a nice iconic piece. We did have him come to our meeting and three council, I'm sorry, three commissioners did ask him point blank what was the difference of the increase. And one of our commission members is in the building trade, and she knows very well of how things are planned out. And it's just like, if I was going to plan out to buy a car, I know, okay, this is going to be so much more. That's what was really disappointing. The other aspect is, after he left the meeting, lo and behold, there's an article in the paper. The paper, everyone's entitled to their opinion, however, I don't believe that was correct. The commission votes independently, we collectively do that. Staff does not influence us. And for him to say that, that's not correct. And I, I'm offended by it myself. But we want to make something great for the city. And go ahead and say it, it was bait and switch. Just bait and switch. And we haven't had the other aspects of this kind of issue from other artists that were submitted. So he has nice work, but it'll have to be really proven fact to me that we're not going to get this behavior again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Irons.
Questions?
Thank you.
Last speaker is Randy Baker.
Well, I don't profess to be any knowledge of art, and I certainly do not have any idea of the art commission. But I do know about a person's work. I don't care about a contract, care about a handshake and looking at somebody's eyes. I'm retired, but as a professional for 33 years, I contracted my work just like that. If I told my company I could do something, they didn't ask me any questions, I got it done. I paid the price, whether it was good or bad. As a layman taxpayer, this kind of really irritates me. It should irritate all the taxpayers in this city. I'm not going to say what it was or what it is, other than that they are wanting more for less, or more for what was decided. It boils down to a word of honor, boils down to whether or not it's presented. If they thought that it wasn't going to be correct, it should have been said that night. I was here, I asked, I come up here and asked you guys. The reason I asked you is because I'm just now getting in part of the civics, because it interests me. But I don't like what just, what's going on. If we have to wait for another art piece a year down the road, so be it. But taxpayers should not have to be inflicted with an increase. And once again, I don't know this artist, I seen the rendations, thought they were nice, I think it'll be great. But I'm not willing to sign a check for 25,000 more. If somebody hired me to do a job, that's exactly what I would do. Fuel prices went up, I'd have to suck it up. It would be in my pocket. Because the next time I come to you for a job, you're going to know that I came through at that cost, even though the fuel prices went up.
Randy, to go along with your point, would a fuel prices drop, would you, you wouldn't, you'd still stay, you'd still stay with the same contract, right?
That's correct.
You win some, you lose some.
That's correct. You got to know what you're doing. If you don't know what you're doing, you shouldn't be in the business. It's that simple. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing that there are no additional speaker, I want to close public comment, council deliberation and direction.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just add a comment, there was a question about the RFP versus the RFQ. Maybe I can spread a little bit of light on that. So we talked to a consultant about kind of going back out, her recommendation, because you can do two different things, you can do RP, which is what we did, and we get proposals. She said sometimes, especially with bigger pieces, you can get better proposals if you do an RFQ. Because a lot of artists are reluctant to put in the time and effort in developing a full proposal, knowing that they're going to have to compete with a lot of different things, and they're just not willing to do it. And so the way you do an RFQ is you ask for qualifications, here's what we want to do, here's the size, here's the budget. You get artists that will submit representative work, so you can see the type of work that they've done. Usually artists have a style, right? And you pick and you shortlist that down to maybe two or three artists that you want to work with, and then you ask them to prepare proposals. And sometimes you give them a stipend to do some of that preliminary design work proposal, and they come back with those proposals, and then you pick one to move forward with. And so you'd still see the artwork, the art commission would see the artwork going through. We're not just picking an artist based on their qualifications, but it's a process and it takes a little bit of time to go, to go through that. But what we've, and staff's new to this, I'll readily admit that this is the first time the city of Elk Grove has ever done a public art project like this. And so we've been reaching out to some individuals that have gone through this. And it feels like, and it seems like, and the recommendation is, that an RFQ may present or produce more different proposals that the city council and the art commission will have to choose from if we go down that path. So we'd like to, we'd like to propose that that's what we do if you want to go down an RFP, RFQ path.
Jason, did we give these artists a stipend to tease it?
No.
So they did it all on their own dime. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Gentlemen?
In a contract, is there anything relative to timing that what we gave them was only good for a certain duration for them to sign that contract, whether, or is there any buffer in there for cost of material change? Or I don't know how that contract is actually written.
Thank you for the question. No, I don't recall there being a specific line in the contract that says, you know, we're tying you into this particular timeframe. The timing that was included in the contract was a schedule of performance specific to the goal of having this project delivered by Memorial Day weekend. Outside of that, I don't recall there being something spoken in that way for that reason.
Well, I mean, you know, I certainly
Well, I mean, you know, I certainly, I mean, that's where I started, too, is, you know, with the, a deal's a deal, so to speak. I mean, but I also know I like the, I like the art. There's no guarantee whether we comes back with certain other artists that will like what we see, and will lose additional time. Just thinking out loud.
Well, hypothetically, Gordon could still bid on this new project.
But the problem is, he, right, so he bids on the same project, but we offer 250 when we're talking about maybe 225.
But, and what I was getting at, just hypothetically, he could come back with the same piece and say, is this something you're interested in still? And here's the price. I mean...
But it costs us 25,000 more.
Well, I mean, the 250, 250 is the, is the budget, doesn't mean we have to use the full budget. It, it's just really an unfortunate thing, Darcy.
Yeah.
It's really unfortunate. I, you know, I've, I run a team of 14 people who do estimates for PG&E. We do stuff all over the state of California. And, you know, it's, it gets back to, you know, you've got to know what your material vendors are. I mean, if you're bidding a job and you know that it's going to go into, into a six-month window, you've got to put an inflation buffer in there, because you kind of typically know there's a cycle. You can get burned on it, but there's typically a cycle with all those things. So, it's, it's just really disappointing. I mean, we, we praised Gordon's work when he was here. He, he was very, very pleasant, he was very kind, he even offered your guy shop to another artist that was affected by the fires. You know, there was, there was a lot of, I thought, really positive things, but God, it just, it, it leaves a bad taste, I think, in everybody's mouth. Whatever the intentions were, I mean, we do, we do requests for proposals all the time with the city. And this is the first time I'm aware that somebody's committed at the 11th hour, so to speak, and, and want to modify the contract after it's been approved at the council level.
Okay, anything else? Ready for the question? Entertaining motion?
Before you make a motion, can I seek some clarification? Based on the comments you heard from staff and the Assistant City Manager, it sounds like there's a question about RFQ versus RFP. And here's my suggestion. Following the approach presented to you by the Assistant City Manager, what it looks like we're contemplating is an RFQ proposal that will then narrow down perhaps the artist from that, and then either negotiate or do an RFP from that. So, to accommodate that, what I would suggest you do in the resolution, right now it says RFP only, what I would suggest you do is say RFQ and/or RFP, and then get, that gives staff the latitude to move towards this process, which hopefully will get you a, a nice piece of art at a price that we're, we're comfortable with.
So, in my estimation, here's the kind of unfortunate part of the situation. And, Darcy, again, appreciate you coming up here and making the presentation. I can tell you the one thing I won't accept is the 30% reduction, because, you know, when you look at it, it is significant of what it does to the overall scale of that, of that art piece. But the sad thing is, is that going back and looking at Gordon's proposal, where he's listing just his qualifications and experience, and showing some of the pieces in his, that he's already completed, he probably would have gotten the job off of that. And so, I think this is a learning experience for staff, and, and hopefully now that we have a consultant on board, we'll do a little better job at the process of it. Because, you know, as I say, you look at very varied pieces of art, none of them are anywhere close to what he had proposed. All of them, you know, look like successful installations and, and meet the criteria of what the cities were looking for. But unfortunately, I think because of what happened at the Arts Commission meeting, and then in the press following, the well's been poisoned at this point. And it's a sad thing, because I think Gordon does great work. I'd love to have a piece of his artwork in the Civic Center. If he can come back and, and woo the commission and get back in good graces, it's certainly, he's, his work speaks for itself as far as the qualifications aspect of it. But for $250,000, that's a lot of money. And I expect to see something that, that makes a significant, significant impact. And even at the $200,000, I just think coming down to 20 feet by 10 feet was not acceptable. And so, I, it's too bad that we're in this position, but I think it's been an ugly way to get here, but we've arrived at the right place.
Okay. Anything else? Vice Mayor?
Well, I just, I'm going to ask then, so are we, I agree with Councilman Hume, I think the size is not, you know, not negotiable if we're, if we were to go down this route. You know, I'm just, for full consideration of everything that's on the table, I'll ask, Ms. Ton, are we, is this the, is 225 the, the best you guys are willing to do?
I would say, are you asking, am I, are we still willing to do the 24 by 10 for the original budget of...
I'm asking, is the original proposal, is 225 the, the best that you can do?
Not having that as an opportunity before, I don't feel like I'm in a position to make that decision all by myself without going back to my team and look. I wasn't prepared to negotiate a price tonight, but I was prepared to offer factual information. If that's the direction that council would like to go, we'd be happy to entertain those discussions, and if necessary, go back to the drawing board, if that's the direction that council resides.
Well, I, I think if we could reissue the RFP, and you could submit that price then, but I'm just asking if we have it on the table right now? Okay.
And, Darcy, to be honest with you, goodwill and honesty in, in the transaction, I'm not saying I'm trying to question your integrity, but the way this came down is not good, to me, it's not good. It's going to be in the media. These are, these are things that, from a business standpoint, it's a, it's a black eye. And it is, was talked about. I mean, I've dealt with it in both personal, business, Randy mentioned. You win some, you lose some. If you, if, if, your word is your bond. And I, I would, if you guys, I can't speak for the rest of council, but if you were willing to do what was talked about the night when Gordon was here, at the size that was talked about, at the $200,000 level, we can just, I think we can just move this on. But if you guys can't do it, then I guess we're going to go another route.
So, to clarify, if I were willing right now to commit to a $200,000 budget at the original scale, would council vote to maintain us as the artist?
I would.
I would.
Are you willing to commit?
I, I, you know, it's, it's a very difficult position to be in, sitting right here at this moment without, you know, having any numbers in front of me. And I'm not our, you know, project manager that puts a lot of the job costing together, so it's a bit unusual. But, you know, we're, we're, we certainly did not intend for this to happen. We certainly don't want that blight on our resume. If that would be the only way to salvage something good, I sure would like to have an opportunity to look again. But if we're sitting here drawing a line in the sand, and, and council were to go ahead and, and vote for that, I, I may be in a position to, you know, just suck it up and figure it out later. I don't know. But I'm not hearing a resounding yes that that's what council wants to do.
I think we're asking if you're willing to sharpen the pencils and make that happen. That's...
I don't think that's fair to put her in that position right here. I mean, you don't know what Gordon's...
Yeah, I would agree with...
Right on that. But I, I would say this, if I could ask the two members of the Arts Commission that are in the audience, give these folks a second chance. He does some good work. So, if they submit a, if they choose, which, as I say, the blood may be bad at this point, but if they choose to submit a, a proposal...
They can submit a proposal.
Yeah.
We will look at that.
Yeah.
John, is another option, could we give them till today's Wednesday? Could we give them till Friday at close of business to, to either accept or decline the original contract for the original size?
Yeah, see, here's, here's the thing about that, you could do that, sure, that's fine, if that's what you want to do. There is no contract at this point, as she pointed out. The way this came to the council was brought to you as the approval of the city manager, with approval of the city attorney to approve the contract. And that's where things kind of fell apart. Because as the contracts started getting negotiated, that's when the artist explained that the cost had gone up and they can't do it for the original proposal. So, they weren't bound, we weren't bound, and that's why we're back here. So, if you want to give the directive to give them until the close of business Friday, that's fine. We still have no contract. We would still have to negotiate the contract and finalize that, which probably wouldn't get done before Friday. There's still a bit of work that needs to be done on that, on both sides.
Okay, then I would move to, to let, let Darcy go back, talk to Gordon, and till Friday, if they can do it for the original price, then we'll move, we proceed forward. If not, then we go out to bid.
Go out for the RFQ.
So, then do you want, do you want this to come back to council? Or do you want to give staff direction to give them until Friday to confirm the original deal? And if they don't do that, to rescind the approval?
Yeah.
I think that's what I'm hearing.
That's right.
Rescind the approval and move forward with an RFQ, RFP.
RFQ, yeah. Close the business, close the business Friday.
So, just define close of business, 5:00 PM?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you guys good with that?
Okay.
And we've run into problems, don't be 501, because we've run into problems.
We have run into 501, yes.
I'm serious.
Yeah. This year, yeah.
Counsel, if I may just ask a clarifying question, so with the close of business on Friday, are you saying as, as it was originally proposed?
Yes.
So, no deviations from the original proposal for the original price?
Original size, yeah. Well...
Other than the fountain and pedestal, which we are anticipating, anticipating as an additional outside their scope of...
To be clear, 24, 12, $200,000.
Yes. If they want to improve upon that, absolutely, but yeah, at least that.
Yeah, if they want to take less money, but I'm doubt they're going to do that.
Or do something else, add a kinetic component, I don't know. But yeah.
And for clarification, is an email to staff sufficient as that confirmation?
Yes, that'd be fine. You can coordinate with Nathan on that.
Okay. Are we good? Do we need a vote, John?
Well, we haven't quite voted on that proposal yet, so if someone wants to make a motion...
Yeah, I made that motion, yeah.
Got a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstention? All right, next item.
Thank you again for coming, Darcy.
That'll take us to item 10.3, which says, receive information, provide direction on naming concepts for the Civic Center project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kristin Nelson, I'm the City's Public Affairs Manager. Tonight, I'm bringing back an item that we first discussed at your last meeting on January 10th, about the naming and branding concepts for the Civic Center project. At the last meeting, council's direction was to increase public engagement in the process and bring back alternate name options. There's a number of things that we did in that timeframe with the help of some of our local sources. You mentioned one of them in his 10th anniversary this week, Elk Grove News. We also talked with the Elk Grove Tribune and the Elk Grove Laguna Forums. That very night, they were very active on social media, they started talking to the community right away, and asking for their comments and suggestions for naming alternatives. And so, we started mining those sites and, and getting their suggestions and collecting them into a list. We also extended an invitation to all of the city employees and the contractors, asking them to submit their ideas and name options. We, we took it a step further, and we invited some of those local sources, well, all of those local sources I just mentioned that are social media sites, into the office for a brainstorm. We also asked them to share some of the polling information that they had. They had run an independent poll on the Elk Grove Tribune, and they provided their results to us. All in all, over the time period between January 10th and 17th, a list was compiled of 200 name options. That was attached in your packet tonight as attachment one. From that, staff internally had a conversation, an internal working group that's continued to work on this project that represents a multitude of departments, had a conversation, and from those, there were six options that were developed into a shortlist. And those were polled through an account that we have with Survey Monkey. Those were shared on our social media sites. And over the course of January 19th through 21st, over that weekend, we saw reactions, and we reached almost 30,000 Facebook and Instagram followers, thanks to the help of our community who also took this viral. We had 133 social media reactions, 66 Facebook shares, and a total of a little over 1,200 actual survey responses, just in the course of three days. In that survey, the, the participants that were polled, they were, they were told the same thing that we shared with you guys at the last meeting, that the name would be used to establish a personality for the space, generate a first impression before anyone even comes onto the grounds, distinguish it from similar amenities elsewhere in the region, support marketing efforts, and in fact, that this name could potentially organically brand the surrounding area as a district. Wanted to share with you some of the text that was paired with the naming options to help our residents understand kind of the description and the inspiration behind those names. You can see that the context of those names are included here. I won't read all that, that's a lot of copy.
Thank you.
The next slide is going to contain some of the survey results. So, we polled each individual name option on its own, and asked for a modified Likert scale, so you could like, or you could be neutral, or you could dislike an option. So, these results were included as a green sheet option in your package this week. So, as you can see, I'm just going to point out some of the highlights here, but the Elk Grove Civic Center had the most neutral response of the independent questions. The Grove was the highest percentage of likes at 60.9%. Again, this is amongst a sample of over 1,200 responses. And the Silo was most disliked, but it was not far behind, or far in front of the canopy or center point. So, there was some strong dislike on some of these options, and you can see that here. The last question of the poll asked our respondents to rank each of the naming options on 1 through 6. So, there was a fairly, like, diversified response, and so, I'm just giving you all of the data dumped in there from Survey Monkey. So, you can see that the Grove and Elk Grove Civic Center generated the highest first So, at this point this evening, we wanted to ask the council to discuss these options and the survey results, and if possible, to direct staff on which options you would like to have advance to an in-house logo design.
Wave 10 o'clock rule for the, just kidding, just kidding.
Well, I've been pretty strong supporter of the Grove. I know that there's the Grove in Southern California. I know that we're trying to make something that's unique and different, but I think, you know, considering there's, you know, several hundred miles away, it's really NorCal versus SoCal. Almost any name that you pick, it's probably somewhere in the country, there's something with the same name. So, I, so I support the Grove. Yeah, you can come up with a unique name like Center Point, but that doesn't do anything for me, and obviously score fairly low.
So, I got, I got to compromise. First of all...
Ask them for a compromise.
Or another suggestion. I did say wave 10 o'clock rule, right? No, so the one other thing with the Grove is partly because you're right, it's, it is not unique. But I do think, at the end of the day, you know, for, let me just say it, I'm proposing Center Grove, C-N-T-R Grove, so combining the two, one, we paid for it. So, I honestly, I never thought it was, it was that bad, but, you know, that sits well with me, I'm using something we paid for. But two, I really like what it stands for, Community, Nature, Traditions, Recreation, I like what it stands for. And if you say Center Grove, we learned earlier from, from both consultants, Crocker and Crocker and Augustine, that a lot of times... and Augustine, that a lot of times the slangs will follow, so you will probably end up with people calling it The Grove anyway. So we would have something...
Leave it that way.
Because we would have, because we don't have anything unique. We would have something unique, and we would have something unique, and we have something that would mean a little bit more because it would touch upon Community, Nature, Traditions, Recreation.
You know that, that's the whole problem. If you got to explain it...
We would, well, we would. I think we would have things around there that would definitely communicate that.
Mayor, members of the council, I don't want to interrupt the discussion, but if you're going to start deliberating, you might want to take public comment first. I think we have one speaker signed up.
Oh, wait, sorry.
Two speakers. Two speakers, excuse me.
All right, let's do that. Thank you. And first speaker is Randy Becker. Following Randy is Lynn Wi.
What's in the name? You know, you got the Crocker Art Gallery, Sacramento Community Center, imagine that. First of all, if I didn't mention it, it probably wouldn't be very good of me for not mentioning it. The word on the street, to be honest with you, we didn't do a very good job with the public's money. However, we derived it, spending $38,000 was a wrong thing to do. You know, I mentioned to you guys a few weeks back, a few meetings, about heritage, how the town has come about, how the city, we've got 171,000 minds free. Let's use them, please. It's a civic center. There is not one brand, not one word, that is going to jump out at people. I'll tell you what'll jump out. 10 years from now, 15 years from now, it'll be Center Grove, or The Grove, or the Community Center. That's what it'll be, but yet, we're deliberating over what we're going to call it. I'll share this one last comment. I have a good friend of mine that's working on a very huge project that's going to be named. Him and I got into a very private conversation over it. In the end, I told him this. It doesn't really matter. The reason it doesn't really matter is people will call it by what you decide you call it at a certain time. So let's be fiscally responsible in the future, and let's come up with something that we know that the citizens will end up calling it, whether they call it today or not. Let's not beat each other up over it. My idea actually was Elk Grove at the top, Laguna at the bottom, Community Center with the word Unity in capital letters and everything else in small letters.
Randy, that's the whole purpose. We're not doing the Civic Center. This is going to be the district.
No, and I get that, but I'm just telling you, everybody's got ideas.
Right.
When I'm saying ideas. So it's an idea. So let's not beat each other up over the ideas and just come up with a name and move forward. Everybody will follow. They may not like it in the beginning, but at some point in time, they'll follow. That's all. Thanks, Randy.
Thank you, Randy. Lynn Wi, and the following Lynn is to Vanessa.
Good evening. So I appreciate the efforts in trying to come up with a name for this particular district, but I think we can wait a while on it. Let's see it take shape and then come up with the name. You know, we had Laguna Ridge, and then we came up with the name Madera, and many people still refer to it as Laguna Ridge, or they call Laguna Laguna, East Elk Grove, East Elk Grove. And I don't remember you determining how these areas were going to be named, or Franklin area is named Franklin. And I don't remember council decisions, we're going to call this the Franklin area or the Franklin region. So I think that we could look at some heritage. I don't like the idea of using something from Southern California. I would think as leaders that you would be able to be a little bit more original. True enough, we could come up with something that's used someplace else, but I sure would like it to be maybe used at some other state or some other country than comparing ourselves with Southern California. I'd like to think that we're a little bit different from Southern California and offer some different opportunities. So I've been thinking about it, and I felt like we were kind of rushed to make a decision about what name we liked. But we do have the barn in West Sacramento, and there was a silo at that site, and I recognize people don't like the silo, so I thought, well, maybe we could call it the Farm District because we are losing our farming heritage, and we have had that. Or maybe we could name it after an influential person in our community, or has been active in our community, not necessarily living within our community. Well, Pappas is bringing us Costco, and now I found out tonight that he owns the property around the retail that we're going to develop. So how about the Pappas Aquatic Pool and Center? Now, I know we didn't name the Civic Center apartments, but I've had a number of people, because of the design and the quality of their look, call it Russia. So I think if we sit and wait, our young people might come up with an area for this district, that we could come up with something that's going to fit, that the community itself came up with. And it is unfortunate that the 38,000 was spent, but I'll look at that as a learning experience, and it did give us some direction to know that we do have some pretty creative people within our community and outside our community, that we can all work together to come up with something that's unique for us. Thank you.
Vanessa?
Sorry, I didn't want to talk, but I wanted to weigh in real quick. Two things, I agree with Lynn, I don't know why there's a rush to name it. I think that a community-first approach in the future is probably better just for the city in general. There are a lot of creative people in the city, and we're willing to give our free time and labor and ideas to the betterment of our community. So, you know, collectively, asking for that information before seeking a contract for somebody to name those pretty terrible names. Anyhow, so that's a little tidbit. Also, I really hate Center, I'm sorry, Darren. It's just, it needs explaining, and I'm not sure what traditions, is it the traditions that have already been held, the traditions that might come? It's unclear. And I think I saw on Kristin's poll that it was like 69% disliked, so not high on the list. I don't mind the Grove, the Grove Community Center. I did suggest the community with the big Unity because that's kind of our campaign, so that would be kind of cool. But whatever it is, boo for Center. Thanks.
All right. There are no additional speaker. Want to close with a comment? Counsel, a direction and direction.
So I'll just throw in here that, again, I'm no closer to a decision than I was when we just had the two or three items in front of us. I had thrown out the canopy as a suggestion, and it got the most dislikes only beat by the Silo, so...
Right on, Lynn.
Thanks for beating me on that one. But I want to say something to Councilmember Detrick that, and I won't name them by name, but there's people who referred to Elk Grove as The Grove, and it grates the you-know-what out of people who grew up here, at least in my opinion, much the way somebody who came from the city probably can't stand somebody calling it Frisco.
That's true.
So I guess this is maybe a little bit different in that this is a district and we're confining it, but I just, the idea of Elk Grove being called The Grove grates me. But I don't have any better ideas. My better idea got 71.1% dislike, so...
What's matter with C-N-T-R Grove? Is that okay?
Darren, to be honest with you, and I apologize for this, Vanessa, but to be honest with you, if we were going to go just put a gun to my head and pick the best one, I'd go all the way back to Center Point and say, that's the one we paid the money for, that I put some thought into it. Yes, it needs some explaining, but there's a lot of playoffs that we could do with it. I really liked the way the logos played on monument signs and on the sides of buildings, but...
I'll jump on that. Center Point for me then, because I do believe, I think we've come to see what they try... And you know, we can debate about the merits of 38,000, but by the way, the council never chose that, but it's not here nor there. I think that there was, the expertise was warranted because as, I think as folks can see, it's not easy coming up with something like this. So there is a thought, marketing, you know, is a true profession, and it's used in many, many different things, so I don't, this is not unusual. We tried to go about it ourselves, and we wound up kind of coming back to still no, nothing stood out. And the point that they were making was, whatever we choose will become, you know, the public will become used to it at that time. So in a way, there wouldn't be a wrong answer, so to speak. So just because we're, at least I can get agreement from one, I'm going to jump on board with C-N-T-R Point.
My feeling is straightforward. I think a number of people already know this as Elk Grove Civic Center. Why not Elk Grove Civic Center? Somebody made that suggestion, and it was almost an aha moment for me, but folks are referring to it already as that. You know, it's, I hear what you're suggesting with the Grove.
It's not the Civic Center. There's no civic buildings there.
Right.
And the idea was to get away from the institutional type of feeling, the government type of, that was the whole point of naming it something...
And that it's been, originally, this was, the original Civic Center naming was for the property that the city of Elk Grove owned. Now we're looking at the whole district, and trying to have a name that's going to be representative of the district, not just the land that the city owns.
Sure, yeah, I understand that, but you know, it seems like we're not making any movement, you know?
Well, we got two votes for Center Point. C-N-T-R Point.
But I guess the other part is, we go out and do a survey, and the results come back of the survey, and Center Point was one of the worst ones received on the survey.
Right.
So I mean, we're talking about having public input. I mean, you just heard Vanessa speak, that, you know, she totally disagreed. Everybody I've run it by disagrees with it.
It's awesome, I know, but it's all subjective. So at this point, I mean, I, you know, I don't...
You're not going to sell me on it.
I think we name it on... The Grove just offended someone who's issue about Grove, so I was willing to go have a Grove as part of it, but... So I'm going between you two right here. I'm C-N-T-R Grove, C-N-T-R Point? I just need one. Oh, you want...
That makes Darrell's job harder, but...
I don't think it gets easier. I don't think waiting makes it any easier.
I don't think it does either.
So I, you know, we could, you know, close our eyes and point to one on the paper, I don't know.
Kristin, when did we start this process? Six months ago?
I don't think it was that long.
September?
It was, yeah.
So it's not like this is something new. This is, I mean, the consultants floated around a bunch of names to get to this point.
I just don't think we can make a right or wrong decision on this. It will grow... Mayor, what do you think? I don't, you haven't chimed in? Oh, you were saying Civic Center.
But you guys don't want to.
I'm sorry to speak too fast, but I mean, if you have the results that show what the community doesn't like...
Come on up. We can't hear you. Come on up.
I mean, you guys are the elected officials, you're going to pick what it is, but you do have results from telling you what the community definitely doesn't like. And so it's a little bit, I mean, kind of rude to me that you were kind of pushing aside the fact that 69% of the people that took the poll hate your name.
Vanessa, I agree with you 100%.
So I mean, pick something neutral, that's fine, but going with the thing that people hated almost the most, that's kind of offensive to the community, I think.
I'm giving deference to the gentleman who's speaking for a lot of the community from who's grown up here, so I'm giving defer, I personally am giving deference to that. He's saying that if you're from, he equated it to, if you're from San Francisco, people are not liking it to be called Frisco. Members in his community are feeling that. So I'm not ignoring the 69%, I'm also listening to...
That's about the name of the city, though. That's not about the name.
Right, right, and I know, but he was drawing the parallel.
It supports your position.
Kristin, number one is The Grove, and number two is what?
In the polling, it was The Grove and then Elk Grove Civic Center.
Oh, hey. It's between The Grove and Elk Grove Civic Center.
But the problem is, is as has was mentioned, A, we're not limited to civic buildings, and B, we're talking about a larger district, and so you wouldn't have the shop... So if you want to, well, but then we're going back to Vanessa's point about flying in the face of what people want. I mean, you know, if it were Civic District, you know, then you could have the shops at the Civic District or something like that, you know, but I think we're... I say table the whole thing, I'm tired of it.
That might be a good idea, right?
All in favor, say aye.
I just think it should be something transformational, that's all, too. I mean, you know, if you go Civic Center, I mean, what, you know, that's the only thing about that.
It sounded like there needs to be more work, but I would imagine that we got to provide a little bit more direction than let's just table this.
Let me ask this question then, related to the process, because I only took the survey that had, what, 200-some-odd names on it that I know had to have been herding cats on who chose which five. So did you take, and I apologize, I was out of the room, maybe you covered this, did you take from that list and narrow it down to a smaller list, and then to whom did that smaller list get distributed in order that we were able to determine this percent liked it, this percent were neutral, and this percent disliked? How did we get from 200 names down to whatever it was, six names or five names?
To the shortlist?
Yeah.
So we took the 200 names that had been compiled through the public process, and we met as an internal work group with representatives from Economic Development, Public Affairs, the City Manager's Office, Public Works. These are all folks that have been working on this project since September and working with the consultants. We talked about what we thought were the strongest, most marketable names within that set, and that's how those six were derived.
So then maybe what we do is we go one more round and use the same process, but instead of 200 names to choose from, you have six names to choose from, and we are then winnowing towards what the community's overall choice is, rather than being top-down, we're going bottom-up. And we may still end up at the same spot we're at tonight, but I mean, at least then, because with 200 names to choose from, I would, you know, as soon as I scrolled and picked one, I couldn't remember how many I'd, I mean, it told me how many I picked, so I knew how many I had left to go, but I couldn't remember, did I like one back there, or I liked this one? But so maybe if we just keep narrowing...
The community only had six to choose from, though.
What's that?
The community only had the six to choose from. That's when we put the poll out, Survey Monkey, on the city's Facebook page. They didn't have the full 200 list, they were just choosing from the six that were there.
Yeah.
You had a different list, you had the whole thing, and that was how we, from your votes, as well as staff, that's how we got to the six. And then the six went out to the general public.
So it's already filtered, I guess, yeah.
So here's, the council's not prepared to make a decision.
Well, let me just say, I mean, real quick, because Lynn made a point earlier about Laguna Ridge. So Laguna Ridge, the sales of the marketing name, it wasn't the city, it was the master developer came up with Madera, and we couldn't get the community to say anything more than Laguna Ridge. And here we are, 10, 12 years later, and we're still calling it Laguna Ridge. Hardly anybody knows about Madera, which was the marketing name. So whatever, and maybe speaks to Randy's point, whatever we call it, the public is going to adopt, you know, some... They're going to adopt its own name, or it's going to take on, whether if we say Center Point, it becomes The Point, or The Center, or Center Grove, and it becomes The Grove. So I, you know...
Did you have something you wanted, Jason?
I was just kidding.
I'll tell you, if the council is unable to make a decision tonight on the name, what we would do is we would essentially not have any name on the overall site, but we would still call, like the Aquatic Center would be called Elk Grove Aquatic Center, until there was a point in the future that you decided you wanted to name the center, and then we could do a larger branding. The buildings would just be known as what they are, so Elk Grove Community Center, Elk Grove Aquatic Center. And we would just keep the signage very simple, and it would just have those basic, you know, names on there, and then at some point, you could decide that you want to actually name it and brand it, and we can go back and then add some new signs and do some of that. That's what we would move forward with, absent a direction on a name, just so you know.
But see, even towards that, I was thinking as this process unfurled, that, you know, those are opportunities to be more transformational, that rather than being Elk Grove Aquatic Center, it could be The Water at whatever, you know? So it has something that's a little... so it has something that's a little catchy.
Well, that was the thought of the names, right? If you came up with a theme for the whole thing, then you could play off that with the individual building names. But without a direction on whether it's The Grove or Center Point or anything, unless you want to start a whole new process about naming each individual building, we would just stick with the generic title, the working title that we've been using for the aquatic center is Elk Grove Aquatic Center.
Well, then don't spend too much on the initial sign. I mean, seriously.
That's true, no, that's true.
Right now, the signage on the aquatic center, it just says Aquatic Center and it has the logo that's kind of, you know, the Elk Grove tree, the oak tree with the Elk Grove or the elk antlers in it. And that's like a separate metal design off to the side and just says, it's just Aquatic Center. And so, that was what was originally put in the bid specs and that's what would be built. There are some signage on the outside of the site that say Elk Grove Civic Center and those could just be left blank, just walls for now and then we could come back later and add signage as the council saw fit.
How about the crossroads, since we're at the crossroads? That's a new...
I'm fine with that, Jason. Do we have a consensus? Otherwise, we're going to be here all night.
I think that's the best we can do today.
Okay. Right? We have a consensus.
It's the best you can do.
Hey, why don't you go back to Frisco there?
Alright, let's adjourn this meeting at 9:59 PM. Thank you.